Half a day. The Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land and Justice is now called to order. Today is Tuesday, October 20, 2020. The time is 12:31 PM. Notices for this virtual public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Tuesday, October 13, and again on Sunday, October 18, 2020. And the notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on Tuesday, October 13, and Sunday, October 18, 2020. This Zoom meeting is hosted by the Legislature's MIS staff, and I thank them for their assistance. And the host of this hearing will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. We have two items for 12:30 on our agenda. There are two bills. Bill number 382-35COR, introduced by Senator Luis V. Munia, is an act to add a new Section 19406 to Article 4, Chapter 19, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating the Pandemic Bill of Rights. Then we will hear Bill number 399COR, introduced by Senator William M. Castro, an act to add a new Section 1903A7 and add a new 19406 of Article 4, Chapter 19, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the renewal of declarations of public health emergencies. We will recess after the hearing on these two bills and reconvene at 4:30 for a round table on pre-hospital isolation and care for COVID-19 positive individuals. I'd like to first acknowledge the presence of my colleagues. Thank you, colleagues, for being here. Beginning, of course, with Senator William Castro, Senator Luis Munia, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, Senator Mary Camacho Torres, our minority leader Senator Telo Titigui, and our Committee on Rules Chair Senator Regina Biscoley. Okay. We are also honored today to have very distinguished guests on our panel, including our Congressman, Representative Michael S. Nicholas, and our Archbishop Michael J. Burns, our former Congressman Robert Underwood, and many others. Sitoz Masi for being here. All right, so we will begin with the hearing on Bill number 382-35, and I would invite the sponsor, Senator Luis Munia, to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I have to say at first that this is probably a stage that I've stepped on unlike any other in my entire career. So I just thank you for allowing, you know, everyone to come in and testify. And I have to say, no disrespect to anybody else on here, but I'm a little bit starstruck and a little bit nervous to speak in front of the Archbishop, so please bear with me. I feel like God is watching. So, Madam Speaker, as you said, this is Bill number 382-35, is an act to add a new subsection 19406 to Article 4, Chapter 19, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating the Pandemic Bill of Rights. And just for formality, I'll read my testimony and then just go off a little bit on my own personal feelings as well, too. There will always be a debate on how far government can impose its wills to protect whom they govern. There is an ongoing debate right now between the left and right, and liberals and conservatives, and Democrats and Republicans. I mean, you see it all the time in the media. This bill will not be, it will not be settled by this bill, or the legislature, or even the governor. This bill does not target anyone, but rather it is intended to reiterate our constitutional and organic rights as they apply to pandemics. The bill is solely dedicated to the protection of our constitutional and organic rights. These inalienable rights include the freedom of religion, the right to keep and bear arms, the right to just compensation, the right to due process, the right of equal protection and protection from excessive fines and cruel and unusual punishment. Here's what the problems that we are having now with Guam's public health emergency laws that permit the government to deny fundamental civil rights. The government can close our churches instead of providing assistance and guidance to let them safely operate. The government can close down firearm registrations and firearm ID issuance that infringes on the rights of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms. The government can seize your shipment of face masks and reimburse you not at your cost or the replacement cost, but at the production cost. Imagine being reimbursed at the cost of paying workers in China $5 per day for labor. They will never be able to determine the production cost, so these people will likely never be reimbursed. The government can seize your shipment of medicine that was prescribed for you and that you paid for, and then give it to whomever they please. Now imagine them taking, for example, your lupus medication and use it on a COVID patient. The government can convict you of criminal acts like felonies and misdemeanors for things that are not in violation, that are not violation of our criminal code. For example, this year, one can be convicted of a misdemeanor for not wearing a mask when entering a business. Now, last year, if we walked into a bank wearing a mask, we'd probably be looking at, I don't know, five to 20 years. It's a whole different ballgame. The government can create or redefine crimes without enactment into law. It doesn't matter that courts have consistently ruled that only the legislative branch of government can create crimes or redefine crimes, and that the legislature cannot delegate this authority to create crimes to another branch of government. We have seen executive orders that attempt to rewrite the elements of the civil violation of public nuisance and the crime of criminal mischief, which may carry a felony conviction. Now, I know that this bill does not address the issue of forced closures of businesses. Perhaps, maybe, in the future, we can lobby for amendments to our Constitution and organic act that make the right to operate a business a fundamental civil right. Now, the term business, the term business privilege and business privilege tax kind of disturbs me, and I hope maybe that the next legislature will change the name back to gross receipts tax, which is the term used throughout the United States and is defined in generally accepted accounting principles. Now, do we need this bill to protect our constitutional rights? Probably not. We needed to let our future governors and in future emergency declarations that are constitutional and organic rights must not be suspended in those declarations. Now, Madam Chair, I hope that we report this bill out. The people deserve the protection of the law that will be enacted by this bill. They should not have to incur the time, cost of lawsuits to protect their fundamental constitutional and organic rights. And I must remind all of our colleagues here today and all of the elected leaders what we did when we first took office. We put our hand on that Bible, we raised our right hand, and we took an oath of office to protect and faithfully, in our own will, protect the constitutional, Constitution of the United States of America and the laws that abide by Guam. So I must remind us that we all took an oath to that office to protect the Constitution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Munia. I'd also like to recognize the presence, the presence, sorry, of my colleagues, Senator Sabina Perez, who is the vice chairman of this committee, and Senator James Moilen. Thank you, Senators. And we will begin now with those who signed up to testify, beginning with our former colleague, former senator and current congressman, Representative Michael S. Nicholas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin, if our Archbishop has signed up for testimony, I would like to respectfully defer to him if the committee will oblige.
Thank you. That would very much be appreciated. Archbishop, if you are ready to testify, we would like to recognize you, Archbishop Michael J. Burns, Metropolitan Archbishop of Fagatán.
Well, half a day, Madam Chairperson, Senator Chalahi, and Senators Munia and Castro, and other distinguished members of the 35th Guam Legislature. I would like to testify in support of this bill. I don't have all the language to identify that bill, but the concern that I share, perhaps obviously, is the exercise, the free exercise of religion. And when I say that, I don't mean just the Catholic Church. Pretty much every Christian church on the island is concerned about the exercise of free religion. When you talk about the exercise of free religion, it goes more than just the church, being in church. We exercise religion through every parish pantry for the homeless, for every ministry to the homeless, for social housing for the homeless, for any number of social ills. The Christian church, the Catholic church, is involved. And so for us to be limited in any way for, you know, forming or contributing to a, is a function of, you know, that is trying to reduce the amount of domestic violence going on in our island, anything like that is really, it's breaking into or changing religion and our exercise of religion. And of course, for the Christian church, Sunday is our day, and to find ourselves so, you know, so grievously limited to almost not allowing anybody into the church, that's a problem for us. And at the same time, we, certainly as the Catholic Church, we recognize that we have an obligation to collaborate with the state. You know, the relationship between church and state has been going back and forth for some many decades. And from my point of view, what we as the Catholic Church want to do is to partner with government. As long as the government is amenable to the way that we do exercise our religion, and especially for Sundays. I think, right when the pandemic began, the Catholic Church was involved through Polly Mike and Father Ron Richards to be part of the Pandemic Response Plan team. And that's, to now, it's, we're dedicated to this, you know, we're part of this. And partners should be in good communication before things just change before us. We have proven ourselves in the Catholic Church that we do Sundays really well. We follow all the protocols that, for social distancing, nobody walks into our churches without a temperature check. We sanitize so much, like, you know, I have to sanitize my hand every single time I give communion to somebody. And so, as partners, we should be able to push back at times, too, that, you know, if something's becoming a little, a greater weight on us as the church, we're gonna, you know, we may push back at times, because that's what partners do. All in all, I say I'm really grateful for the efforts of you, Madam Chairperson, and the senators here, to make, give us a greater clarity of how do we operate in the midst of a pandemic and how do we operate in a situation where the, there's a lot of pressure, there's a lot of angst, and I think you're bringing some really good rational sentiment into the conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Archbishop. I would now recognize the Congressman S. Nicholas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for convening this, this public hearing on this very important bill. I want to begin by acknowledging the public health concern that has been, of course, with us over the past, going on eight months now, and is recently showing just how prevalent it is in our community and is, you know, striking a lot of fear into the hearts of our people. I think that, of course, we need to stay vigilant and address the public health concern. However, I wanted to present to the committee and the senators with some facts that we are aware of, that I think need to be taken into consideration as we begin to look forward. First, we, we have a lot of expectation for a vaccine. I know that the entire world is waiting for one. I know that the nation is very much waiting for one, and I know that our community is very much waiting for one. It's important for us to be very, very clear about what the expectations of vaccination should be. And this is information that's been shared with me directly with experts in the CDC and the National Institute of Health. As a matter of fact, I was just on a, on a conference call with some of my colleagues at 4:00 AM this morning, just getting the latest information on relief movement as well as the pandemic circumstances. Right now, the vaccination expectations have, have some issues. And the reason why this conversation is not being highlighted a lot is because we do want to encourage vaccination. There is a, in the country, not on Guam, but in the country, there are about 30% to 40% of the public that still does not believe that the pandemic is real. That's very problematic, because we can expect that those numbers will not be seeking vaccination. On top of that, 50% of those who do believe the pandemic is real, only 50% are expressing that they will seek vaccination. So there are those who don't believe the pandemic is real, there are those that do but are hesitant to seek vaccination because of the, the rate at which it's being developed and concerns that it might, it might not present all of the risks given the abbreviated development timeline. So nationally, we're looking at maybe a third of the country getting vaccinated. And as we've come to know over the discussions of herd immunity and the need for, for a certain level of vaccine to be, you know, distributed throughout the community, even just 30% of the country getting vaccinated would not be enough to make COVID-19 go away. And so those are things that we need to overcome perceptually. There are also some other perceptions related to the vaccine that we need to be very, very aware of. Based on CDC and vaccine development experts, the efficacy of the vaccine that's being created has, has some variations. It could be as low as only 50% effective. It could be as high as only 75% effective. And that's important to understand, because the perception in the, in the country, and I think the perception locally, is that the vaccine that we are anticipating is going to be something similar to the MMR, the measles, mumps, and rubella with a 97% efficacy rate. That is not what is being projected at this time in the development of this current round of vaccines. The global availability of the vaccine, the ability for the entire world to be able to avail of this will not be until 2024, given vaccine manufacturing capacities, the need to manufacture other vaccines, and the demand, and the total amount of population that would, would need to receive it. Altogether, given these facts, there is a perception, I think, on the island that once a vaccine becomes available, once it becomes distributed, we're going to be able to turn everything back on and return to normal within 30, 60, 90 days. The reality, given these facts that I've shared, is that that is not going to be the case. COVID-19 is going to be with us for quite a while. And in light of that, we not only need to be incredibly mindful of the public health concern and continue to address it, we need to also be very mindful of the need for us to rebalance our approach, so that we are not being kept in the circumstances that over the duration is going to be unsustainable. If we're looking at 2024 for a global vaccination rate, we need to be very upfront that our tourism markets, particularly because they are health-sensitive, may not be interested in traveling until such time that there is a global declaration that COVID-19 has been defeated. But given these facts that I've shared, that is not something that is very likely to come in the near future. And so as we weigh these facts, we need to immediately begin readying our circumstances so that our people are going to be able to continue to sustain themselves as relief packages become exhausted. Right now, we've, we've moved the CARES Act, that's provided tracking to be 1.5, 1.6 billion in relief to our people. Our language in the HEROES Act is projecting to bring in over 3 billion for our people if we're able to get that through. The political realities of that are uncertain at this time. There's just been a lot of back and forth on that. And then the outcome of the elections on the 3rd of November are going to have a serious impact on whether or not that's going to move forward. So we are definitely included in the language, but the ability to secure those resources remains uncertain. And even if we do, those relief packages likely will carry us into 2021 and perhaps a little bit into fiscal year 2022. But again, given the vaccine timelines, the efficacy, the general public's communication of their willingness to, to receive it, even, even that relief may not be enough to carry us as far as we need to go to overcome the virus and return to a general state of normalcy. That being said, I believe that this legislation that we're discussing here today is absolutely a step in the right direction towards very mindfully rebalancing our approach. I believe that we absolutely need to continue to press the public health concern. I definitely want to recognize the archdiocese recently, the passing of Monsignor Senior. I observed firsthand the, the very, very disciplined approach that they are taking to manage community spread and to make sure that's not going to be a concern in our churches. That needs to be, that needs to be definitely mirrored in our private sector as well as in our government. Part of the problem as well with the current approach is when we have these hot or cold approaches on how we're dealing with trying to contain the virus, when you shut everything down, a reality that I think needs to be very clearly understood is that you pent up demand. You make everybody stay home, and you make everybody have to wait before they're able to go out and do what they need to do. And so when we go hot and we go cold, when you unleash that pent-up demand by opening things back up again, that's why we see long lines at Ross. That's why we see a lot of people going out and flooding establishments that were previously closed, because the demand was pent up. If we have a more systematic approach on how things open and close, and we don't create these demand circumstances, then we can have, similar to what our churches are employing, a very regimented procedure. I, I've been concerned, and I'm sure others have been concerned, where we see certain businesses almost completely flouting the public health concern. And so we're creating, we're creating a circumstance where people are feeling like it's all or nothing, you know, open everything up or shut everything down. And both are going to be incredibly devastating, not only in the immediate term, but over the long term. And so I appreciate this legislation, I support it, I believe that it moves us more towards a balanced approach on how to address the public health concern as well as the, the quality of life issues that, that we're also dealing with on a wholesale basis. I think that we, we need to take these facts that I've shared and seriously digest them and as a community, and definitely in the positions of leadership that we hold, provide the guidance to the public for us to take the necessary actions to not only stay vigilant and very, very disciplined in the public health aspect, but to also be able to do so on a sustainable basis, not create these pressure cooker type of situations that are actually, I think, exacerbating the, the viral spread and, and bring in, bring in the communities that we have a partnership approach, rather than, you know, a, an approach where it's all or nothing and, and things just become a lot more polarized and demand becomes a lot more built up, and then when the pressure valve was released a little bit, it just actually exacerbates the, the circumstances. So I thank, I thank the senator for taking the necessary step. I know it's very difficult, this is not easy. You know, there's a lot of fear out there, and the concern is that any kind of approach that tries to seek a more balanced view, it could easily be portrayed as being negligent to, to life and negligent to health. And I don't think that that's at all the case here. I think that we as leaders need to communicate in a unified way that there is a way for us to move forward in a balanced fashion. And I'd like to credit the senator for introducing this and taking that, that risk. And I think that this is perhaps an opportunity for us to start a very important community conversation about the need for rebalancing, but also the need to take the public health concern seriously as we do so. Thank you so much, Madam Chairman, and I was gonna say I yield back, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and welcome back. And we will wait for public health to recome back on when we will hear right now from Congressman, former Congressman Robert Underwood.
Half a day, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to, I won't go on and on about what I think should be done with the pandemic, and I do thank the previous speaker for actually clarifying the actual status of this second round of pandemic relief. We have been treated in the past to sort of a flowery picture about what's going to happen. Now we have a more sobering and more realistic picture. I would add that I think it is incumbent upon any political leader to spare no effort to seek not only the vaccine, but to help educate the community about vaccine and help educate the community about where we're at with our public health situation. And indeed, this is not the beginning of this discussion. This is way, oh, way, we're way from the beginning. We are, this is an ongoing conversation in which all leaders should have been in participation over the past few months. I want to thank Senator Munia for her legislation. It's an interesting piece of legislation, and I'll try to confine my comments through the actual hearing on the legislation, which I think is designed more to make a statement about our current state of affairs, rather than to enact specific legislation to protect constitutional provisions, which I believe remain fully intact. Constitutional amendments, as they apply to Guam, are clearly in order. If they're not, they can be challenged in court and decided in accordance with case law, which is extensive on all these issues regarding the scope of power a government has over matters of public health and safety. Every single amendment that is referred to in this legislation- Every single amendment that is referred to in this legislation is available to every citizen to litigate if any of these amendments are really in danger of being crossed by local governmental action. The bill uses Attorney General Bill Barr as a source to reflect a concern, although not necessarily legal guidance, that some government actions to deal with the pandemic may be testing the limits of the Constitution. Expressing a concern is different from taking legal action. The Attorney General Barr has the official standing and resources to challenge any state or territorial action. While many people are clear in their disagreement with the decisions of the authorities over the nature of when, how, and for how long to shut down various activities in our community, it is not that clear that any constitutional rights are really at stake. Using Bill Barr as a source for these disagreements is misplaced. In response to some lockdown orders given by state and local governments earlier this year, he said that these orders were the greatest intrusion on civil liberties since slavery. While some may feel the attempt to save lives by government officials in ordering lockdowns may be inappropriate or even harmful, the comparison to slavery is odious. Making a comparison of an attempt to save human lives to human bondage and servitude is clearly inappropriate. Moreover, other than making these comments and generating controversy, the Department of Justice has not really taken any legal action to deal with this so-called intrusion on civil liberties. Most constitutional scholars concede that First Amendment rights, including freedom of religion, are not absolute. Authorities can and do regulate the manner in which these freedoms are exercised through their police authority, such as when gatherings can occur and under what circumstances. These are regulated through issuance of permits and regulations, permits for protests, regulations for public safety and for public health. While some individual exercises of this authority have been successfully challenged, the idea of police authority has not been. I want to congratulate the Archbishop and indeed all the members of the communities of faith here on island for their impassion and sincere a service to try to help the community as a whole get over this pandemic and deal with all the pressures that occur as a result of life and home and having to deal with different ways of conducting worship services. In the case of church services, I think I am sympathetic to the Archbishop and other members of the faith community trying to organize church services. Their concern is that local authorities have vacillated about under what circumstances services can occur. This kind of decision-making makes it difficult to have full confidence in the exercise of police authority. But the vacillations themselves do not constitute a constitutional threat. In a case involving a Nevada church earlier this year, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that states may regulate attendance at churches. There is the serious concern as to whether churches are being forced to follow different rules from other public gatherings. Again, this is a matter of consistency and implementation of the state's right to regulate attendance in the name of public health rather than the right to regulate itself. I'm also reminded of a quote from the Bible, from Peter, chapter two, verse 13. "For the Lord's sake, obey every law of your government." It is up to us to challenge those in authority when we disagree, and we should hold them to that account. And I congratulate the Chair and other members of this committee who tried to do that. I support these efforts and we should feel free to question these decisions. But to raise it to a level of constitutionality becomes more of a statement of concern rather than real legislation. Now, there is one piece in here that is real legislation. Changing the violation of these rules from misdemeanor to civil violation is real legislation. This reduces the penalty for violation of the rules as promulgated by the government of Guam through executive order. Inasmuch as, to my, no one has really been charged with anything, to my knowledge, this doesn't appear to change many things. However, I do agree that civil violation may be more appropriate since it will not show up as a criminal charge. However, multiple civil violations must eventually show up as something, as a form of criminally willful behavior. I hope that we never reach that point. In spite of the disagreements over the extent of the implementation of public health rules, there is a genuine climate of civility in this community. However, the longer we go on without considering additional factors, such as consistency and attention to opening up various parts of our activities safely, this civility may become a thing of the past, much like walking around without mask. I pray that we do not get to that point. The cry for help, which this legislation suggests, is stronger than the legal basis for its enactment. In that sense, this legislation has already had an impact on all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Congressman Underwood. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of our Director of Public Health, Mr. Artsen Augustine, along with the Director, some Augustine, you are. I can't hear you yet, Art.
I'm sorry, Chairman.
There you go. Director, I can't hear you again.
Hey, Madam Chair, I'm here.
There you are. Okay, please begin again, yes.
Oh, actually, Madam Chair, our Deputy Director is going to speak on to the bill.
Hafada and good morning, everyone, or good afternoon at this point. We've had some technical difficulties during our last hearing, and so we've kind of broken it down and we're going to try and proceed the best we can. If we lose anyone or if you lose, just let us know. I'd like to begin by saying I am Terry Uggan, Deputy Director, Department of Public Health. And just listening to the testimonies that have taken place so far, of course, you know, I'm deeply touched and coming from a family that's very religious and faith-based and strives to maintain, to uphold that, these conversations are very important. So I'd like to definitely acknowledge the Archbishop and his testimony earlier. You know, the people of Guam have a long history of having their liberties at some level stripped from them. My grandparents, my father's generation, especially during World War II. It's true, again, we are fighting a war, a pandemic, and it too has casualties. But unlike our previous World War II and our war that we've been in, that there are certain liberties that we are trying to restore back to the people by opening up more and more, trying to find that new normal that is out there. It is imperative that collectively we do all that we can to safeguard the lives of Guam's community by basic messaging and practices, properly wearing face coverings, properly hand sanitizing, staying at home as much as possible. And of course, if you have any symptoms, to make sure that you reach out to your physician. We also know too that as we move forward, trying to open up more facilities and stores, of course, churches as well, that though we are reminded about how the COVID virus is spread from person to person, no matter how we look at it, we're still looking at enclosed spaces where air conditioning allows air to recycle and move around the room. We're also talking about a collection of all ages of people coming together. And even at 25% of capacity, in looking at the 15-minute guidelines by CDC, we're looking at people that are coming together for usually 30 minutes or more and sometimes as much as an hour. The simple gesture or holding, I hate to say, a misolet or even touching the pews is a way in which the virus can be spread from person to person. And simply that acknowledgement that a person can do in recognizing their elders is an easy way of transmission. There is a lot of balance that we have talked about previously, balance, trying to find that new normal, that new level of lifestyle that allows people to exercise their liberties at some level and at the same time safeguarding the valuable lives of our children, our manoco. And as we all know, with the different ages of the people that have passed away, that really this virus can kill people of all ages. Our data doesn't lie in the number of new infections. Our data doesn't lie in the numbers of deaths that we've had. So I'm very interested and very eager to hear the rest of the testimonies that take place today and in wanting to make sure that we take a very close look at this and hear what people have to share. So thank you very much. Once more, I'm Terry Uggan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director Uggan. And thank you Deputy Director Duainis for also being here and to the Director, of course, of Department of Public Health and Social Services. All right, we have a couple more people signed up to testify. It would be Polly Mike, then Ron Leguacchio, and then Mr. Kenyon Guerrero. So Polly Mike, if you are here.
Yeah, good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, and hafada to everyone. Just to echo the Archbishop's words as well, in partnership with the government, with full intentions of cooperation, we entered this and we were very fortunate and blessed to be partners in this endeavor. But throughout the whole experience, and I can give you firsthand experience of this, and I thought we really were partners in all of this. And the goal was to secure the safety of our people, to ensure that this pandemic does not explode even further. And then when the closure and the executive orders came out with the closure of churches, that hit home very, very hard. And it sent a clear message that we were no longer partners and that we were subservient to that, the higher power, I guess, if you will. And I know the difficulties it is. I don't have the answers either. But if anything, that this bill provides is what former Congressman Underwood provided, was awareness and continued outreach. I think people need to be educated as well. And I think that if you and I continue to dialogue and be able to provide this type of venue to our people, it'll go a long way. I just want to point out one thing, especially in terms of our sick, especially those at GMH, those who are isolated, those who are quarantined, they are unable to be visited by anyone, not even their families, let alone a religious minister. But in that experience of that opportunity and hearing from patients who have been there, the fear continues to grow and it continues to be harvested there in those institutions of health. Fear can be replaced with faith. And I think if you and I can acknowledge that, that faith does heal. And many of our people who are in there look towards a higher power, whether it be a Christian God, whether it be a God that we believe in as one, it certainly has been proven that faith heals. And if we can only bring that component into our discussion and into the pandemic review plan, I think we would have much more success. And so I just want to again reiterate that, that do not discount our faith groups. Our faith groups are very powerful. We're here. Our goal is to help our people. And then we want to have responsible worship, as the Archbishop has mentioned. We've been very disciplined in our protocols. And in fact, now we have a group of individuals from the archdiocese that are being trained to be contact tracers. And so that in the event of any of our churches or schools anyone tests positive, that is not to take the place of public health officials, but it's to work in tangent with them and to work in partnership with them. So I hope that this bill would open the eyes and the ears and the hearts of all the leaders, political leaders that be, so that we can continue to work together and don't discount anyone in the community. We're all here to help each other and we're all here, and one goal is to help a better Guam and to build a better Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Polly Mike. I'd like to state for the record that Father Michael Crisostomo-Vicker for the clergy, but the archdiocese of Agapán, we'll now recognize Mr. Ron Leguacchio.
Hafada, si es más, si todo es santo. Dona de la Naióna, moste, un rubli. Illegado, Congressman Max Nicholas. Agaloki, Delegado, Congressman Haggas. Congressman Robert Ando. And lo que sí, si malalago pagu para congressios, si senador Will Castro. Zanagomás, señora Géhelu, terrestre. Zan, i, somotóni, que tiene lais, si senadora Luis Munia. Si es más, si no, no, es de no poder tener da. Zan para todi, man senadora, zan man senadora. Zan iman outoi público, guinigu, gubermenton, iman gagi pabu. Now, I would like to just thank you for allowing me the opportunity, but I would just like to get to what brought my attention to this bill, which was, I read in the print media, particularly, my name is Ron Tilaquania, and I would like to support this bill, 382-35. And most in particular, what brought to my attention was the intent of the Listaturanguahan to protect the basic rights of residents during the Declaration of Public Health Emergency. That was in line 23 and 24, and particularly in line number 17F, which will impose excessive fines. And I would like to just ask for clarity. Now, with this proposed legislation, does this apply towards the public entities in times of hardships? For currently, there are 30,000 unemployed people right now. And that's what brought to my attention is the imposing excessive fines. And more in clarity, if you can elaborate with the private sector be liable and the intent is very general. And I think this is what I'm referring to is for some of the people that are living in housing units that during times of hardships, you know, they are being imposed of late fees, common area fees, parking fees, late fees during times of a pandemic such as this. And I'm just concerned that because there is and there are instances where they are imposing such late charges and fines for not paying up on time. So, you know, during times of hardship. So I'm not sure if this legislation applies to that because it looked like it was basically governmental, for clarity purposes. And I just would like to know if that's, would that not be limited to condominium homeowners associations, apartment landlords and all housing unit owners that can impose such hardships on such fees and fines for our people currently, you know, struggling right now. So that's what my, I would like to get some clarification. So that's what my, I would like to get some clarification on.
Thank you, Mr. Leguacchio. If that concludes your testimony, we will allow all the testimony. And then, of course, the sponsor will have an opportunity to address any concerns at her discretion. Well, now proceed with Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, my name is Ken Leon Guerrero, and I have issues with this bill. On one hand, it recognizes that we have civil rights under the United States Constitution. And then, on the other hand, it creates a useless body of law that will not be supported or enforced by any agency of government in Guam. I say that as probably the only person on this panel here that has stood up during the pandemic to defend our civil rights back when the governor did her partial roadblocks. The biggest problem I have with this bill is that it wasn't introduced in the March Emergency Special Session to deal with the pandemic issues. I'm also concerned that this bill does nothing to limit the governor's unrestricted emergency powers to 30 days with exceptions subject to legislative approval. I'm also concerned that this bill does nothing to mandate legislature approval of expenditure of federal funds in the event of a future emergency and pandemic or any other federal emergency bailouts. The fact this bill changes an offense from a misdemeanor to a civil violation is kind of problematic, too. What is a civil violation? I looked through all Guam Code annotated to find a definition, couldn't find it. I'm sure an attorney will find one and send it to me. But it's not easy to find. There's no definition about who has the ability to cite someone for a civil violation. There's no appeal for a civil violation. And that is, that is a big problem. About the only part of the bill that actually makes sense is Section 19406D, which prohibits seizure of private property without compensation, an act that has happened many times during this pandemic. We have 35,000 people out of work. Our tourism industry has shut down for years. It'll take years to get back to its normal levels. Every day, more small businesses close their doors forever. Our children have lost a year of education and development. Hundreds of people wait in food lines and hope they get to the front of the line before the food runs out. And we're losing our younger people and our older residents who are leaving Guam, moving to other places in the mainland for better opportunities and a better quality of life. This bill does nothing to protect the people of Guam during a pandemic situation. The time spent putting together this bill would have been better addressed, would have been better if it addressed the challenges that our people are going to be facing over the next year with the expiration of the federal unemployment insurance at the end of this year, the expiration of the SNAP pandemic funding and expiration of the relaxed requirements for application on SNAP, the expiration of the federal moratorium on eviction and foreclosures. These are going to leave hundreds of families homeless, but this legislature isn't addressing that. So we have a bigger problem. The bigger problem is leadership, and I'll show you an example. I have been, this is, I guess you can't see it, but this is the COVID tracker that Public Health has issued. I have it, a few of my friends and family have it, but just about every single person I talk to doesn't have it. And according to public health statistics, we got 21 people here. At best, probably two or three people have downloaded the tracker. And it goes back even further because for, since 2012, 2013, I've been a member of the Guam Non-Communicable Disease Consortium, which is a group of 200 to 300 people who have been working together to try to make Guam a healthier place. Because as we look at the ravages COVID has hit our island with, it's hitting hardest our elderly and our people with chronic diseases. Public health is the real thing we should be talking about here because public health has been handicapped in their mission to improve public health. Go to any of the facilities and you can see how rundown they are. I remember taking people down to Inarahan Public Health Center to help them apply for benefits, and they couldn't get upstairs because the elevators weren't working. The people had to actually come downstairs to take the applications because the people couldn't get upstairs. Look at Manila. The main public health building is sitting there empty and, you know, decaying rapidly due to inuse, all because public health didn't have the funds to properly maintain their building. And I'm not blaming public health. If they have a choice of, you know, doing something to help people or hiring electricians to come in and test circuits, it's obvious where public health money is going to go. What we have here is a question of priorities. This bill doesn't make anything a priority for the benefit of the people of Guam in face of the challenges that we're going to be facing in the very short time ahead of us. So all I can say about this bill is it was a waste of time. It was a waste of precious time because we don't get this time back. We've spent eight months and $1.6 billion. And what have we got to show for it? We've got a population that doesn't trust the government more than ever before as a result of the actions at Adalou, favoring politically well-connected insiders, and the inactions of the legislature to hold Adalou accountable for the monies they've received and the actions they've taken. It's no wonder that nobody's, you know, putting these, downloading this very simple and valuable tool that could help public health in its mission. So what we need to do is we need to see our leaders act more like leaders and start putting the needs and concerns of the people first. When the people see and feel that, then we won't need laws like this for to ensure compliance with orders that were issued for the benefit of everyone. But we don't see it that way right now.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much. All right, we've exhausted the list of those who've signed up to testify. So I will now yield to Senator Luis Munia, who is the sponsor of the bill, for questioning by the pen.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm willing to open it up to the rest of the colleagues, and I can just ask the questions at the end or answer some of the questions at the end if they have any other questions. But I can take care of all of that in my closing.
All right, thank you, Senator. My Vice Chair, Senator Sabina Paris.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate all those that have taken their time to provide testimony and making a very important contribution to this dialogue. You know, we are living in unprecedented times, and this pandemic has truly tested our ability to adapt and respond. And it's comforting to hear that there is a willingness to collaborate between Department of Public Health and the Archdiocese. So that is very positive. But if I could just put a plug in regards to a piece of legislation that I also introduced that would address some of the underlying fears and concerns that our community is facing. There is a bill 386, which addresses the emergency health powers. And part of it was to close the gaps in procurement law that was highlighted in the quarantine facility oversight. But I would just like to point the attention to the panel about another portion of this bill. And that is that, if I can quote, "The exercise of extraordinary emergency health powers must be grounded in a thorough scientific understanding of public health threats and disease transmission, balanced, focused, and guided by principles proportionally affecting the whole of the island community." So I think this would help to address the underlying fears that we're facing. And, you know, as you know, I think a part of this is communication, too, as well. You know, communicating these guidances, you know, that it is grounded in scientific principles. And I think if we can provide that proper communication to the community, you know, I think we would go along, it would go a long way into developing a concerted effort in stopping the spread and also not hampering our abilities to exercise, you know, religious freedoms and other freedoms. I think that's something that I would like to offer at this time. So, Sisus Masi, Madam Chair.
Sisus Masi, Senator Paris, Senator Castro. Senator Regina Bisco Lee.
Sisus Masi, Madam Chair. I just am very appreciative to everyone who has taken the time to participate and lend their voices to this discussion. I appreciate the author of this measure. Thank you very much for putting this bill forward so that we could have this discussion. And I look forward to continued discussions on the floor, should it make it out of committee. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And if I have any other questions, I'll send it to you, Madam Chair, and to the author, Sisus Masi.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino.
Sisus Masi, Madam Chair. And, you know, I too appreciate both your having this hearing, all of those who testified, and the writing of this bill because these kind of discussions are really important. We know that out in the community, there has been just various discussions going on. And it's important that we have them amongst ourselves as well, that we get opportunities to hear from all sides. And certainly, we've heard various, very different types of positions here. And this is really healthy, it's really important. Rather than kind of sitting in one office out of the 15 and thinking thoughts by ourselves, we need to find these ways to listen to, you know, something that we feel addresses their concerns and then hear back. And so I do think that this has been an important part of the process. I appreciate, as I said, the different sides. And I'm going to continue to do research on this because there are a lot of elements here that need further I don't have a question in particular, but I have written down about four. And you to think about not only this legislation, but
Hello, Ryan, our legislative audio.
Our internet is choppy right now. We're working on the internet.
Do we need to pause?
We can go to recess.
Okay, so we'll take a brief, two-minute recess. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. I apologize for that interruption. We were having technical difficulties with the legislature's YouTube feed. So we are back, and we were, while this hearing has been fully recorded, we were, we were cut off in the middle of Senator Sabina Perez's remarks. Senator Perez, would you like to repeat any of those remarks? They've been recorded, but if you would like to restate them, you're welcome.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where I was cut off, but yeah, I just basically wanted to put a plug for my Bill 386 that would help address some of the underlying concerns that Bill 382 also addresses in regards to ensuring that there's a decision is based on science, and that that decision is also communicated well to the public. So that was the gist of my remarks, but I want to thank the sponsor for bringing this forward, and thank you to all those that have come to testify. Sisus Mossi, Madam Chair.
Welcome, Senator Marsh Titino, as well. Your remarks were not broadcast. If you would like to just repeat them briefly here, the full remarks have been recorded.
All right. Sisus Mossi, Madam Chair, you know, I was just discussing how important it is to have these discussions. We know that the community has expressed a lot of concerns, and we can operate, you know, individually, office by office, but it's important that we do have these moments to get together, to hear concerns from various aspects of the community, and to be able to just have that open dialogue amongst each other and amongst, you know, the concerns of the community. Being able to hear that all is going to help us understand as much as possible in a way to move forward. But yeah, and I just mentioned that I'm going to continue to do research on this, because there are many issues that are involved here, and each one deserves a thorough examination. So, Sisus Mossi, Madam Chair.
Sisus Mossi, Senator. Senator Telo Titino.
Sisus Mossi, Madam Chair, and thank you to everyone who's here today. Like Senator Munoz, I'm also starstruck for having everybody here today, from the Archbishop to our Congressman to former Congressman. This is amazing, you know, opportunity, and thank you so much for taking the time out to be here. You know, Madam Chair, I think that moment of recess gave me an opportunity to go get some water, because I was out right when you were probably asking me some questions. So I think, you know, something above here is taking care of me, but I really appreciate public health being here. I was hoping to get more information from, from public health with regards to this legislation. I heard a little bit, Terry, my internet too is breaking up a bit, so I didn't have a chance to hear whether public health came here today to give testimony in support or not support of this legislation. So I either Terry or the director, could I hear your stance on this legislation?
And I'll refer the answer over to Art.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the 35th House Legislature, and also Congressman Sinicolas and former Congressman Underwood, and Madam Chair. So with regards to the measure before us, we on the department side have always had the sense that we want to do a more balanced approach in terms of the quality of life on Guam. So the measure, if it will ensure that and promote a balanced approach while maintaining the public health perspective, the public health mandate, we would support a measure that does that. It has never been the intent for us to deprive our fellow community residents of equality of life. The measures we took, the mitigating measures that have been implemented and continue to be implemented, is really intended to protect all of Guam, our public health, our brothers and sisters. It was, it was never and is not intended in any way to short the opportunities of our family, our friends, to seek and have a rich life within faith, community. Unfortunately, with the virus and how it has evolved here on Guam, we had to put mitigating measures. But the bill in itself, in terms of a local approach, or perhaps a reminder, or some of the things that we as a public health department would always want to keep in mind, we can support a measure that would help provide us a further framework, in addition, of course, to the Bill of Rights. But with this measure, the pandemic Bill of Rights, is something that we can always keep in mind in terms of as we move forward with guidelines from the department's perspective. I know throughout the months, there has been changes to the guidelines. As the Church has said, we have met with them, we heard their requests, we have also responded favorably to some of their requests, and have been looking at how we can provide spiritual richness, encourage other activities, while still maintaining social distancing and all the other mitigating measures that the deputy has already touched on. But doing it in a way that we right now as a community through this conversation is perhaps one of many conversations to be had in terms of what is the new norm for Guam? How are we going to coexist and live a life with greater quality, yet while maintaining public health measures that safeguard each of us, those we love, those we come home to, and those we work with? So Senator Telo, any measure that would assist us in the framework, Madam Chair as well, and Senator Munoz, your legislation, anything that is improve our measures, help us put thoughts and considerations into how we can put our public health guidance out is welcome. We've not ever shut our doors. We are working with a business community. Paul and Mike earlier talked about contact tracers in the community and the Catholic faith. I thank you for doing that. We are already working with our business community in looking at building their capacity for contact tracers as a concept in their HR areas, so that we can also look at the reopening and a balanced approach. We are working with the University of Guam in partnership with the University of California, UCSF San Francisco for contact tracers up there. So we're looking at a multitude of approaches that can help us so that we can control and contain the situation by always keeping in mind that, some of you have said this already, really eventually we're going to look at opening Guam, and how will we do that in a balanced public health perspective while maintaining quality of life and protecting our fellow Guam residents? And so we would definitely support legislation that would help frame that and build some parameters for us to work with. And in some situations, I'm sure many will be pleased. In some situations, we may have individuals that are never going to be pleased with the direction public health puts forth, or perhaps even the legislative system or the executive orders. So we're here, we are open to discussions, we're open to anyone listening, that if you have a proposed plan or suggestion, please send them to the department. We'd be happy to meet with you, talk with you, and see perhaps your approach, your idea. Maybe none of us yet have thought of that here in this, in this discussion, and we can bring it forth. So that's where we are with public health, Senator.
Well, that, that was definitely lengthy in explanation, and, and I had a lot of great ideas in there. When you're making recommendations, however, I guess the way, the question I asked, the way it's written right now, then it sounds to me like there needs to be some changes into this legislation that you're still working. So that being said, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to ask that question again, and appreciate the comments that were made earlier from everyone. Definitely noted, it sounds to me like this may go further into maybe a roundtable discussion for something as important as this, you know, to go further into this. I think that's what's needed right now. I mean, if deep public health is asking for the community come forward and bring their ideas and everything like that, then I think that's a great idea. And maybe this legislation as the Bill of Rights for the pandemic is a great opportunity. But I have to commend the author for this legislation to do something. She's, she's trying to do something right now to address some of the concerns, and I think it opens the door for everybody's input now into creating something that would be safe for our community, most especially to keep our community safe and to keep our, our families safe too as well. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Minority Leader. Senator Mary Carmichael Torres. All right, we will move to Senator James Moylan.
All right. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Archbishop for your testimony, and Congressman Mike, and former Congressman Underwood, also testimony from our Mr. Leguanyan and Mr. Leon Gero, and especially to our public health. Thank you, thank you very much. So after reviewing the bill, of course, we're referring to Chapter 19 of Title 10, and we know this, this public law is, it's like over 20 years old, but it's the first time we had to execute the usage of this law. And I, and I think the public law was put together for the right purpose, to expedite the care of our citizens, right? And how, how this public law is, is enforced or executed is by, by the governor through executive order. And one of the things, of course Archbishop, that you mentioned is how, how it affected our, our freedom of religion or, or at our different houses of worship for Guam, which is very important to us. And I as well, just like you Archbishop, I did write to the governor expressing my concerns of, why haven't we opened up our, our churches? You know, the first time, I understand, we were all, all new to our first P Cor One situation, but thereafter, we went to P Cor Three, and we followed the rules, and things were, for me, working out, and, and we did the guidelines. But then when we went back to P Cor One, we could have continued. But I'm glad and I'm happy that the governor has, has adjusted her executive order to allow us to open. But that's also after we opened the parks, and after we opened the tattoo parlors, and after we opened the shopping malls too. So I think this Bill 382 came about because of the public concerns. And I thank the Senator for the authoring of this, and because of the public concerns of, of communication of the executive orders that we were hoping to be more a part of, as Father Mike explained, and how we needed to be part of this to, so our government can understand our needs of the people. There's other concerns of how Chapter 19 entitled 10 also work out because of how it's being executed, especially in transparency. And I also authored Bill 338, because currently, this public law has no reporting requirements, and that's also another concern of the public too. But this bill specifically, 386, talks about six points. That's the freedom of religion and constitutional rights to that, also bearing arms, and a due process, and seizure of property, and criminal acts and fines that Mr. Leguanyan wanted some additional information about. But all goes back to how this public law is executed through the executive orders. You know, and I'm also looking forward to hearing Senator Will Castro's bill on 3992, on how we can further clarify what, what we can or cannot do on Chapter 19 of Title 10. You know, usually when we make amendments to bills for, I'm sorry, when we make amendments to public laws, for something that has been in the books for a while, which this has, but has never been executed. So this, this law could be a really good law, the public law is Chapter 19 Title 10, but it's a matter of who has the authority and how it's executed. And I don't think the public is too happy on how that's working out now. I know we're learning our lessons as we go along, but it can be approved, and to include Senator Perez mentioning Bill 386, on how that can improve as, as well. So I'm looking forward to this bill moving, moving further and getting the committee report, and hopefully get onto session floor so we can take a vote on it. But I thank, thank all for those who participated in the testimonies today. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Carmichael Torres.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm just listening intently to this subject matter. I think there's a lot more to this than what the bill proposes. I have to admit, I have some reservations about it. I think that, you know, the rights that it seeks to protect are fundamentally protected already, and there have been a lot of court challenges and rulings on this very subject that, you know, I plan to read up further. But, you know, I don't think that, that many of the rights that, that we're reassessing or reaffirming here are implicitly denied at present. And so, you know, those are the things that I just want to look at. But I'll reserve any further comment on the bill until, you know, such time that it actually comes before the body for deliberation. But, you know, I just, I just feel that it, that what, what we, the rights that we are seeking here are fundamentally protected, I believe, and, and I don't know that this bill will necessarily help, you know, in, in advancing those rights or protecting them any further, especially in a pandemic. And I think that we are in a pandemic situation, and that in itself presents a whole different set of circumstances for consideration. But thank you, everyone, for, for your testimony, though. It's, it's very interesting just to listen to the dialogue.
Thank you very much, Senator Mary. We, I have a couple of questions for the panel as well, but before the questions, I'd just like to say for the record that we did receive a fiscal note from BBMR, which states that the proposed legislation includes six different restrictions, most of which are administrative in nature. However, two of the restrictions do have correlations to the finances of the government of Guam. 19406D of the pandemic Bill of Rights states that the government of Guam shall not permit the confiscation or seizure of any lawfully owned property without just compensation. Absent a particular definition for what constitutes just compensation, the Bureau cannot determine the financial impact to the government of Guam. Should it need to utilize private property during a state of public health emergency, 19406F states that the government shall not impose excessive fines. Absent a particular definition for what constitutes as excessive, the Bureau cannot determine an approximate financial impact at this time. That's from BBMR. We have, of course, requested legal review. There are many legal issues that have been brought up at today's hearing. A legal review by our Legislative Council is still pending, but the bill will, we will require that before we move this bill any further. And we, we've also, of course, invited the Attorney General to be present here at today's hearing to, to help us to, to assess this bill. We also invited the Guam Bar Association, the Guam Chamber of Commerce, the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce, and of course, public notices were sent out to, to all the public. So I did also have some concerns, but in general, because we have this panel here today, I'm very honored, first of all, and thank you again for your patience in being with us throughout. But, you know, I agree. So we're all trying to balance, you know, rights that we are guaranteed by our Constitution, rights that, you know, we have put into law, but also, you know, the safety and, and the lives of the people of Guam. And I guess I would just ask, while we have you here, if you are willing to help us, the government of Guam. As Congressman Sinicolas stated, you know, across the nation, they are having challenges as to the buy-in of the people, the belief of whether the, the virus is really real, or whether it is deadly, or, you know, whether we really need to act in such a restrictive manner, or whether this is a compelling interest. And because that's critical, I'm going to ask if either any of you would like to, to help the government of Guam with suggestions as to how can we get additional buy-in. We have, we also have buy-in challenges, I believe. I think it's indicated by our, the app, someone, one of my colleagues showed earlier, it's, we, the buy-in on the, the tracing app was. It's a we, the buy-in on the the tracing app was was not what we had hoped for by any means. And so, you know, while public health continues to have its challenges, we we have our challenges in general. So would anyone like to to comment on that? How, I don't know Archbishop, especially with the church and you being the leader there, if you you know, if we allow more activity, yeah, how do we get, you know, also additional buy-in that this is very serious and that this is you know, a matter of life and death in some situations or for some groups of people?
Are you asking me a question?
If you would like to, yeah, I'm, anyone, I'd like to ask you or give you the the honor if you'd like to or just the respect of answering it first, if you'd like to.
Yeah, but we have a big reach, you know, as the Catholic Church. We we and it's not just the public because we we know all the faces. And so just our efforts in for for just how much effort we put into having our churches appropriately distanced and sanitized and all those things. We're not doing that just because we're, you know, OCD. We're doing it because we think it's real. And that's one way that we're communicating to our people. You mean, through the people in the Catholic Church that, yeah, this is really real. And, you know, and I think that's one of the ways that we get buy-in. So.
Can I ask you Archbishop, are the churches all following the same protocols or are they, do they have discretion to do different types of like you know, safety protocols?
Yeah, so we we do have a set of standard things that we we want to do. But at the same time, we're, you know, we practice subsidiarity. Every pastor is going to put his own kind of twist on the thing, not a twist, but a kind of a he's going to own it. And so so, yeah, we're not just giving a cookie cutter kind of thing. We actually ask our priests to be prudent, like for sometimes some priests, we're going to say, the priest is going to say, sorry, we don't have the manpower to pull off a mass this week. And so we're going to do a different, something different.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Congressman Senator Nicholas, would you yield to the question?
Sure, Madam Chair. I think that, well, first of all, I wanted to I wanted to absolutely tip my hat to public health, their their task and trying to navigate the way forward in in something that really no one has ever experienced before is not only an incredibly daunting task, but, you know, there there really is no way that we can say that what we've decided or what we've done has been based on on knowing it was the best course to take. And that being said, I believe that everything that has happened thus far has been of the best intentions. And I think that the best intentions are something that we need to make sure is is well communicated to our people. I think that's the first step to reassuring the public that everything that we're that's been done and everything's being considered and everything that will be done is being is being done with the best of intentions. That being said, there are certain things that we can definitely determine after going through this for a number of months. The first is that you know, the the hot and cold approach of locking everything down and opening everything back up again is definitely creating pent-up demand that we see explode as soon as as restrictions are lifted. And those explosions create exacerbated contact risks that probably would not have been so pronounced if there was a more steady flow of traffic, if there wasn't the the feeling that, you know, we need to rush down and get this or get that because it's going to run out. You know, I kind of I kind of compare it to the time when we lost all of our gasoline after, I believe it was Pong Songwa. And and now every time there's, and everyone rushes to the gas stations. When we begin conditioning the public to 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 react in ways where they feel like they need to put their health at risk in order to secure commodities that that may not be available or or may run out or are only or may only be available for a limited time before everything closes down again. We create those artificial demand circumstances that that could actually be exacerbating the problem with an on-again, off-again approach. That being said, I I would I would first advise that we try and consider how we can create a sustainable type of of regime where there is a a standard, that standard is expected, that standard is uniformly enforced. And it doesn't, and it isn't an all-or-nothing approach that that's more reacting to data rather than trying to rather than trying to to steady the data. Another another avenue that I think we we could consider is, right now, we take the the approach where we lock everything down, we try and prevent everybody from getting the from from contracting the disease. And of course, that's that that's definitely a necessity. However, there may be some merit to directing our resources to definitely promoting the the safety of those who are at risk. Perhaps more protocols specifically for those who identify of certain healthcare, health concerns. For example, coming up with a list of those who have proven to be more susceptible to the disease, advising those with that susceptibility to to take greater isolation precautions. Invite advising their households that if you have anybody in your home with this list of of pre-existing conditions, be advised that they are at even greater risk of COVID-19. I think that those kind of awareness programs to our community could greatly help families understand that, you know, it's it's, of course, when you're dealing with someone, you know, who's up there in age, that's that's pretty obvious. But sometimes families don't necessarily disclose, for whatever reason, to each other that, hey, I I'm diabetic, you know? And and so this is a time for us to to really inform the families that, you know, we don't, you know, whatever you want to disclose to your family members is up to you. But this is a list of pre-existing conditions where if you have these, you are at greater risk for a a unfavorable outcome from COVID-19. And communicating that to our community and to our families could really make everybody reconsider whether or not they're going out and exposing themselves. One of the problems is that, you know, there's been, and this is a national problem. There's been communications that younger people are are less at risk, they're asymptomatic, etc. And and then they they don't realize they're bringing the virus home. And if they don't realize that bringing the virus home can can have a negative impact on on the health of a family member, that's that's where we're seeing, I believe, a lot of of transmission where someone who, on their own, probably took a lot of precautions, but someone they live with didn't take as many. And so there just needs to be that that kind of awareness where, you know, you you need to understand that if, you know, your mom or your dad or or anybody in your household that you're living with has these pre-existing conditions and bringing the virus home can can be very devastating for them. We also need to consider perhaps whether or not those of pre-existing conditions may want to opt in to government resources being provided for their isolation. So that as if if we choose to open things up further, those who are at greater risk can receive government support for taking the healthcare precautions they need in order to not expose themselves as things become more relaxed. So instead of having a wholesale approach of of all or nothing, lock everything down or open everything up for everybody, I think a more targeted approach for those who have greater risk factors and for those who reside of them, informing them and providing them with resources to take the health precautions they might want to over and above what every establishment should be setting as a baseline, I think, could give us a roadmap to finding that balanced approach. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Congressman. Yeah, I think you would appreciate tuning into our 4:30 roundtable. That's exactly what we are talking to public health about, is their efforts to to take care of those in the community who are at high risk or who who are positive cases, so before they deteriorate. Anyone else who would like to answer that question, Congressman Underwood?
We can't hear you. We can't hear you, Congressman.
Well, we can't have that, hello. Yeah. So, thank you for reminding me. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just I just want to, I think the original question was, how do we communicate this information in a more effective and efficient way to a community that may not be fully understanding the messages or may not be fully accepting the message? And of course, that's a very difficult problem. It's a problem that goes around the world. Sometimes young people are think that they're impervious to every trend. No, I'm on. So the 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 issues remain, how do we communicate that in the context of Guam? I think basically, we have to go to community leaders. We have to go to community representatives and people in various communities, and we know where these are. And we have to utilize them as as spokespersons and as individuals who can convey the authenticity of these messages, which are absolutely necessary to convey. We should use different languages in order to convey this information. We should use, as the Archbishop said, they have a network. There's also a network with other religious institutions, with preachers in in other faiths as well as priests in the Catholic faith. All of these opportunities present themselves for communicating a message. And I don't know how effectively that message has been communicated, but we should certainly utilize these vehicles. And then in addition to that, of course, we use the standard institutions that we normally use to communicate educational institutions and public service messages through public health and social services. But the most important thing about communicating a message effectively is that the message itself be comprehensible and that the message itself be clear and consistent. And so that is really the key to this. If the if the dynamics, if the goalposts keep shifting or if we're not clear, like in one situation, you may allow this, in another situation, when you do that, the communication structure sort of breaks down. So there's a lot of pressure, I know, on public health to be able to come up with consistent messages. The most common, you know, is the daily announcement that comes out. That is the major vehicle by which people circulate all of this information. And that information, that update, that daily update should be in a more comprehensible way and should offer two or three or four tips based on what they have learned as a result of those experiences. And so in terms of communicating this, and there's no one single way, but certainly the use of community leaders, the use of intermediaries in all the various communities we have. We have one Guam, multiple communities. We like to think that we're one family, but we're actually many different families and we're many different generations. And utilizing all the tools available to us to reach those different groupings, those different communities is absolutely essential. And so that it doesn't look like public health is just, you know, stigmatizing one community over another, that it's actually a collaborative and cooperative venture. And that would be done with community intermediaries. And there's a lot of them. And they're 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 people that can perform that role, people who have the who are seen as wise, people who are seen as stable and people who are seen as people who can deliver accurate information. So you have a messaging, you have a message issue, make sure it's consistent. And then you have the message implementation, which is multiple sources. But this is, I I have to say again that what Senator Munia has done has actually helped create the context for a lot of avid conversation that's going to occur, regardless of whether the actual constitutional rights are under any serious strain right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I wanted to ask the Director, Art Sanagasin, is that public health, when they change, the proposal to change the penalties from criminal to civil violations, do you believe public health will be effective if those penalties are changed?
Madam Chair, with your question, the penalties will change, I think one of the earlier speakers mentioned this, is just to really put more details into what those civil penalties would actually translate to. So that it's 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 very clear. Is it like, for example, if somebody doesn't comply, for example, with an executive order, and it's your first occurrence versus your second or your third? It's never really been the position that we are wanting to criminalize, criminalize the process. We are part of the community. And as the former Congressman also noted, that with regards to civil, it doesn't, I believe he said, goes on their record. And so we don't want to hurt anyone's employability for future employment if they're not already employed. But in terms of the civil violations, it's really listing that and putting that, and that's a really good point. Because if we don't define it as many, if you know, then it's like, well, is there an existing civil violation that's already existing? And we kind of try to tie it to it, but I think it really has to have its own defined in in this provision of proposed bill. So.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director. Yes, some of my questions are in, you know, relative to that regarding the legal. So the the legal questions, I mean, of course, you know, we have these rights. Are they being violated is one. Second, you know, can they be violated under these conditions or not? And what are, you know, or is there a less, a more narrow way that we could, you know, put restrictions down without without violations of these types of rights? But I guess, just in general, have you, has the, I'm familiar with the cases against public health regarding quarantine and the outcomes of the cases that I've seen. Are there constitutional challenges that public health is facing in court right now?
There are, well, I can say, Madam Chair, is that there are some cases in court, and because I'm represented, the department is represented and through me, the AG's office, I basically have been advised not to comment in public about it because there are still some active cases. And so I do apologize that I'm not able to articulate to your question only because of the active cases that we have.
All right. And does the Attorney General of Guam assist or that, does that office assist your office in developing developing the guidelines that you have mandated all businesses to run through your office?
Actually, the the guidelines, Madam Chair, they're developed in concert with the group. I have the incident commander today, Mr. Nado, he oversees prior to his IC assignment, the Division of Environmental Health, and we get some legal input as well. And then he uses the environmental health codes in terms of business application, and then he puts the guidelines we review on. We've actually brought in more people then, some medical infection staff, so that they can look at the guidelines and they provide input, and then we issue them out accordingly.
All right. Because I'm I'm hoping, yeah, that we can, you know, address any potential issues at that point, right, in the in the in the guidance to businesses and opening. All right. And, okay, so the Deputy Director testified. He mentioned three conditions that he was concerned about. I think he was talking about churches at the time, and he mentioned aircon and that all ages were present at the same time and that they were meeting for more than 15 minutes at a time, which is in excess of CDC guidelines for safety. And I was thinking, if we apply that to all businesses, yeah, it's not really applied across the board, it seems to me. Maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but for example, our post office, we have long, long lines at the post office. We have all great, all ages. I've received so many complaints from elderly citizens who who are very concerned with their own health, but feel that is their only alternative to get their mail. And I'm wondering, you know, if, yeah, how do we control these venues, all venues, and make them consistent if those are truly the 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 causes of concern, the aircon, the the more than the number of people, the ages gathered together, and of course, more than fifteen minutes at a time. The the waits at the post office are sometimes in excess of two hours. I've heard of four hours. I mean, maybe Congressman, if you could help us with that, that is really outrageous at this time. And no benches to sit on, things like this. So I don't know why, but they've they've said to have increased their hours, but but Director Beck too, yeah. So we've got, you know, pockets of activity on Guam that seem to operate notwithstanding those three concerns of public health. So how important are those concerns? And and what are we going to do to make things consistent? I think that's, for me, that's what the people always want. They want to see consistency.
Sure, absolutely, Madam Chair. With regards to those measures, let me first go with the post office. We too have received numerous complaints with the post office Congressman. If you're able to assist us. But we've been advised, and Guam Police Department actually has responded, they reached out to the postal staff, and they were very receptive. Unfortunately, the postal facility itself is a federal asset. And so Congressman, if you're able to assist us, we don't have reach to that that situation. And if you're able to assist us, then that the department would be very, very appreciative. With regards to the areas that I believe my deputy was talking about was CDC guidelines, social distancing, and there you have exposure time of fifteen minutes or greater, and maintaining social six week or minimum six week between individuals. So that is always a part of the process when we are discussing the openings of different activities or events. So let me let me show you, for example, the parks. The discussion with the parks, it's an open area, I'm sorry, we're in discussion with the parks. It's an open area, you can maintain social distancing. So that is different from if you're inside a place of worship where it's, if the area is contained and limited. So that's what our, those are some of the variables that are looked at when we are looking at where we can open more safely and expand it and watch the numbers in our community in terms of community spread. And how we are able to contain the virus. And we, what we're trying to do is mitigate any potential outbreak in any of the confined areas. Where there's not the ample space for individuals to be maintained for an extended period of time. And so that's, I don't know if our deputy would like to add further to his comments with regards to his reference perhaps with aircon and
My question is, are those three points, for example, solid points that we have to enforce across the board? Or or do they vary based on what, who's doing the activity?
It's not so much who is doing the activity, it's about the type of activity, you know, there's contact, no contact. Can this, can the activity be done in small groups? Space between the participants, can it be done in a way where it minimizes any potential transmission? So in looking at social distancing, that's one element that we do look at, Madam Chair.
All right. Okay, thank you. I'm going to.
Madam Chair, may I, may I comment briefly on the post office concern?
Sure.
Yeah, you know, the post, I agree that the post office situation is very, very, it it not only presents a risk factor, but a serious inconvenience for our public. But we need to also be mindful of the fact that the post office circumstances are a direct result of the lockdowns and the shutdowns. Because we are preventing our community from being able to go to local businesses and local establishments to be able to procure the the goods and the products that they require. And because there's an inconsistency in the availability of those at a local level, people's behavior is adjusting. The the post office has publicly stated that their volumes over the past months have supers, have exceeded their regular Christmas volumes. And so the post office has now become a proxy in 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 the absence of being able to procure those goods locally. We're kind of bottlenecking the resources into that that procurement channel because the ability to procure elsewhere is is taken off of the table. And that's another example of pent up demand going out and trying to find a way to be able to get the resources that they need. For the public, I want to inform them, particularly those of health concerns and who are at risk. If you give a power of attorney to somebody to pick up your mail, they can pick up your mail. I think that the government could probably try and facilitate that in some way, providing notaries or what have you. And then we also need to explore whether or not we can somehow incorporate the National Guard, for example, that's already been activated for this purpose. To be able to be given some kind of authorization from a a post office patron who perhaps can wait in their car and provide whatever documentation the post office would require to allow for a National Guardsman to be able to retrieve the mail for them and bring it out to their car versus having, you know, various random people inundating the lines. At least we will know, you know, with the guardsmen, who's in line? And everybody can have a greater degree of competence that, you know, we don't know if or we will know that there isn't anybody in this line who's necessarily sick because we're having these individuals tested, and they're they're the ones facilitating the retrieval process. So that that's really the situation with the post office. We've been in communication with them. Their their circumstances are such where their operations are based on national allocations on a performer basis. And so it's not like we can just walk in there and say, you know, we need to get, you know, pushed more to Guam. We would like to. But in the meantime, we just need to understand as well that these demand circumstances are a direct result of the of the actions we have taken. And the bottlenecking is because the public is going to go and get what they need where they can get it. And and that's why it's important for us to be considering this more balanced approach that I believe this legislation represents. And I think that we can perhaps get more creative in finding solutions to to keep our more at risk community from having to stand in those lines. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. I need to move to the next bill. So I'd like to, again, thank everyone for being here, for your valuable testimony. And you're, you may submit anything in writing that you would like to to my office. And I would invite the sponsor of this bill to now close on the bill.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And and again, I want to thank all of the participants for being here for the last two hours to to listen to the testimony and to provide testimony and to ask questions. It definitely isn't a waste of time if we have this many people on and sit through it. I want to thank the Archbishop for, you know, for getting the masses online, but you know, as a Catholic, I I know the importance of celebrating the Holy Eucharist in person. And when when the, when the churches first closed down the first time around, and it it was a big, there was a big hole in my heart. It was, you know, going to pray in the House of the Lord was was so important to me, not just in my success of life, but even in my darkest moments. And and I think this is a dark moment. I think everyone is going through a dark moment now and needs that sense of of comfort. And that's really what the House of the Lord offers, because we can pray anywhere. You know, we can talk to God anywhere, but when you walk into a church, you just feel so connected. And I think that's really, you know, you know, it's it's kind of funny, because going online and going to church, it's kind of awkward, and I close my door, and you could hear me saying the Lord's Prayer really loud all by myself. It's, it just, I feel so much better when I'm praying amongst other people who are who are with me in the same, in that same heartfelt moment. And I think that's really what the church brings. And and it really should be, it really should be an essential practice for anything to bring God into your life. And that was one of the main purposes of me putting out this bill. So that we can continue to have allowed this opportunity for people to go and express whether they're thankful for life or or praying for healing or for whatever it is that they need God in their life for. And and not just the Catholic religion, but all of the churches. You can see, they're all trying to reach out to people, and it's really hard when you can't, and you're told not to. So I just want to thank the Archbishop for that. There's there's a photo that I've been told, and and I've seen it where an older lady, a manamku, and she's kneeling down in front of the doors of the church praying, you know, that's that's really heartbreaking. And you can, you can tell that not just our manamku, but our people need, our people need God. They need him now more than ever. I wanted to ask Public Health, maybe Art Sinagastin, if maybe the CDC or the WHO has provided some guidance on how to safely hold, you know, churches during the pandemic? Have they given any specific guidelines?
To to your question, Senator, I will provide feedback at a later time. I will go back online and see if we have more recent guidelines on on places of worship, and then we can send it to perhaps the the chairperson or or to yourself or both of you. We can provide you the lead so that we can find online.
Thank you. And and I I do want to commend the the church Archbishop and Polly Mike. Polly Mike's one of my favorite priests. Don't tell Father Paul that. But but I I just want to say, thank, you know, thank you for providing us a safe way to return back into the church. And probably one of the safest places to be in. If you take a look at some of our our grocery stores, maybe not even as safe, and they're still classified as essential. So I really want to thank the the church and the Archdiocese for for making it very safe for us to come back into into the House of the Lord. I do have maybe a question for Congressman, and this was actually posed to me, and and you're you're probably going to have to forgive me, because I I I'm more than likely going to butcher the names of these compassionate drugs, but there are some compassionate drugs out there that are being offered that maybe are not yet FDA approved, like monoclonal antibody therapy. There's also convalescent plasma from like blood donors who recovered from COVID-19. There is a Remdesivir, I think that's in clinical trials still, and and an off-label use of dexamethasone. It's a steroid drugs, a steroid drug prescribed for inflammation. What, is there anything Congressman Siniklis that you can do to get Guam access to some of these compassionate drugs?
I can, I can definitely look into it. I'm I'm very careful about about promoting any alternative treatments that the medical community has not adopted at large. I know the President, when he was treated, I believe, I recall two of those drug names coming up in his treatment regimen. But whether or not they are generally available to the public, I'm not sure. I know that all of the methodologies that are being employed now on a on a general basis to the public are what have been adopted as the treatment regimens by the CDC and the NIH. But definitely, and I don't think there's anything necessarily precluding Guam specifically from being able to utilize regimens that have been adopted as a as a normal course of of treatment. But if but if you can, or if anybody, you know, on the on the panel could inform me that there is something that they're aware of that is available elsewhere and not here. I will absolutely do whatever advocacy I need to do to make sure that we are being able to access any similar treatments that are available in any other jurisdictions. Art, if you can let me know, Public Health, just shoot me an email, and we'll absolutely get on top of it if there's anything that we're we're not able to avail of.
Let me thank you Congressman, if it's okay. Senator Luisa, yes, definitely will do that Congressman.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. And this is to address Ron Leguanyasidusmasi. Thank you so much for being here to testify on behalf of the bill. And it is a good discussion for us to talk about the the six points, and and, you know, Senator Moilen mentioned that there are only six points in this, but, you know, the Constitution is is a big document. It has many different points in there. Why I specifically chose some of these is because I recognize that some of these are what some of the concerns are of the the people. The the bill applies only to Gulf Guam penalties, though. Unfortunately, I don't want to make people criminals who don't, you know, who don't wear masks. That's what's on the bill, right? There there are enough bills out there that do address rents and mortgages and and late fees in the legislature and in Congress that we will keep an eye on, you know. This bill is not duplicating that. If if you take a look at the Guam legislative legislature site, you will see that probably from Bill 310 all the way up to Bill 420, this is over a hundred bills that are very, they're correlated to COVID and our situation now. So the legislature has been putting in the time to address all the specific areas of of concern, including the excessive excessive fines that you talked about. So we could reach out to our office, we'll definitely assist you and see if there's a, if there's a certain bill that could address that issue. Thank you. Thank you, Ron. And again, I want to thank everyone for being here, including our former Congressman Underwood and Congressman Mike Siniklis. And Archbishop Michael Burns, I hope you're healing well from your hip surgery, and I I sure hope that one day you can guide me and maybe give me some advice, because I think all my colleagues know that I have a hip injury as well, too, that I probably going to need to fix soon. But and and thank you to Polly Mike and and all of our colleagues here, but most especially to Public Health. And they're they're practically going to be with us all day long, you know, from this morning all the way through lunch, and then and then even to this afternoon. Thank you so much. And and I do understand that there, you know, there's I'm sure there's a lot of other things that you should be doing, but you're you're here addressing these issues with us. Just in summary, Madam Chair, the government, the government can develop guidelines and assist churches to operate safely. The government can delay firearm registration and ID renewal until after the state of emergency is over. The government must fairly compensate people whose property it seizes. The government must never make criminals with lifelong criminal records of people who exercise their freedoms. There are no reasons and no excuses as to why this bill should not be law or force our leaders to protect our constitutional rights. Again, the Constitution of the United States can be summed up in just three words. We the people. Unlike the constitutions, many other countries where people's rights are delegated by the government, our constitution says that the people are the masters and the government is their servant. In our constitution, we tell the government what it can and can't do. In our country, we the people are in charge. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. Again, thank you to the panel. Thank you very, very much. And all of your comments will be incorporated into our committee report on this bill. We are going to move now to the second agenda item, which is Bill Number 399 COR, introduced by Senator Will Castro. And I would like to just take this time to recognize my colleagues again who are still here. Vice Chair Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Telo Titigui, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, Senator James Moilen, of course, Senator Will Castro, the author of the bill, Senator Mary Camacho Torres. Sidosmasi, and we will begin with the introduction of the bill by Senator Will Castro.
Afterday, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity. I don't know if it's divine intervention or the stars are aligning, but to have two congressmen here, the Archbishop, Polly Mike, and my minority leader, I'm going to take, and to have the bill introduced and heard within one month. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to take full advantage of this lesson in humility. If I may, I'm just going to go ahead and proceed with the opening remarks, Madam Chair. So, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity, Senator Therese, and thank you to my colleagues for the opportunity to speak on Bill 399 dash thirty-five coming on rules. It's an act to add a new section nineteen oh three eight seven and a new section nineteen four oh six of Article Four, Chapter Nineteen, Title Ten. Guam Code annotated relative to the renewal of declarations of public health emergencies. Before I get into the details of the bill, Madam, Madam Chair, I'd just like to establish this caveat. I had a conversation, I'm communicating with a couple colleagues on the side, given the recent passage of Bill ninety. And also in collaboration with Senator Perez on Bill three, three eight six. So I just want to advise everybody that this conversation, as fluid as I hope it could be, should be taken in the context of both bills. It was said earlier that we're definitely in a very trying and unprecedented time with these COVID circumstances. I'm sure many have come before us who have served, and many who are hoping to serve in the thirty-six couldn't imagine a more more challenging period in our history. And so while the current statute governs declarations of public public health emergencies, and many believe it's comprehensive, also extensive. Our current experience has taught us some lessons that we can use to close some gaps, as Senator Perez addressed earlier. And address controversies that may have come about as a result of this pandemic. This is the first time I've had a bill where I didn't get a chance to put together two or three working roundtables, but nonetheless, appreciate your participation. The bill in a nutshell first requires certain findings and implements condition and implements conditions under which a declaration of a public health emergency may be extended. Title 10 of Chapter 19, subsection 19104m defines a public health emergency. Article 4, Section 1401 authorizes Imaga Haga to declare a state of public health emergency as further defined in 19104, subsection m. After consultation with public health authorities or if expediency is necessary without consultation. Section 19405 governs terminations of states of emergencies. Now, while 19405, Section B does discuss renewals, Madam Chair, it's within the context of preempting an automatic termination. And so the initial declaration of the current state of emergency response to the coronavirus may have occurred on March 13th. I like to just note for the public record that we've actually had seven extensive renewals via executive order on these states of emergencies. And it's quite concerning, and this demonstrates to me, Madam Chair, in my mind, that the renewal should be explicitly addressed in the statute. This bill, as imperfect as it may be, attempts to take findings and conditions under which a public state of emergency may be terminated and inversely applies them to renewals. It does not attempt to limit the governor's authority in any way or inhibit her ability to renew a declaration. Rather, it will simply require the governor to demonstrate that the findings and conditions have been met in order to renew the declaration. A second, reactive procurement laws and regulations while in a renewed state of emergency, since the governor's declaration, Madam Chair, initial declaration, as I referenced earlier, Executive Order 2020-33 on March 13th, of a state of public health emergency, we have been made aware of questionable procurement practices. And understandably, and was the intent of our predecessors and other bills, as I referenced earlier, are granting the government extra broad procurement powers and attempting to correct that in a state of emergency would allow the government to act in a rather precarious way when faced with decisions. I listened extensively to the public hearing on Bill 90, and I couldn't agree more that there are evidences of abuse of emergency procurement authorities, and not necessarily for public health emergencies, Madam Chair, but also in other types of emergencies. And I thank Senators Sabina Perez for noting that. However, I do believe, as mentioned, that the authors of the current law governing states of public health emergencies meant to provide unfettered, unchecked procurement power for an unknown extended amount of time as we are currently experiencing. Further, in light of the dire economic outlook we're facing, I feel it's our responsibility as policymakers to improve upon the existing law to make the necessary adjustments to the current situation and to implement measures of strict fiscal accountability, even and especially in a state of emergency. While we're definitely in a state of public health emergency, and all efforts seem to be exhausted to ensure the safety of our community, we're also in an economic emergency, and we can't afford to continue for extended periods of time without serious procurement regulation. This measure attempts in its original iteration, and what we have today, attempts to call for reactivation of procurement laws and regulations during renewed states of emergencies. Simply put, in an initial state of public health emergency, 30 days or less it declared, the governor would have broad procurement authority provided for in the current law. And so all procurement after the initial declaration and upon renewal of said declaration would be subject to existing laws and rules. And keep in mind, I did mention earlier, Madam Chair, assuming that Bill 90 is signed into law, this extends that procurement, emergency procurement opportunity to 90 days, provided that a certificate of need is signed and a public hearing is held. I crafted this bill with the understanding that it may be overly simplified on parts of the bill, but I'm here today to listen to you. I'm actually quite humbled that I have the former former senator and chairman of Ways and Means, Chairman of Rules, to provide some input if he's still here, and also the former congressman who could provide a different context by which we can examine the bill on its face. Yesterday, for the listening audience, if you're not aware and you just heard, if you're not clear, Bill 90-35, which seeks to improve emergency procurement, was passed yesterday by the body. And so I think that this bill benefits from the passage of Bill 90, and it certainly could be amended and approved upon in light of the bill's passage. So I'm excited. Today, we were going to initially pull this bill back and have a conference discussion with Senator Sabina Perez, and I look forward to her input this afternoon, as well as yours, Madam Chair, on how this may complement, if not, take certain provisions of my bill and insert it into 386. And with that said, I'm wide open to criticism, input, or any other types of of feedback we can get from everybody who remained on this panel. So thank you. And by the way, for the record, I was ruled out of order. We couldn't go straight to the congressional debate forum questions, so.
Okay, thank you, Senator. I want to state, as committee chair for the record, that BBMR's fiscal note on this bill says that the bill, sorry. The bill adds measures for fiscal responsibility and accountability whereupon renewal of an original declaration of a state of public health emergency, all applicable laws and regulations shall revert to full applicability and enforceability. Legal review by legislative council is also still pending, and there's been no submission or testimony by the Attorney General. All right, so we will now open it up to the panel, and I did not receive confirmation except at this point from Senator, I mean, from Congressman Underwood. Senator, Congressman Siniklis, will you be testifying? And Mr. Younger, will you be testifying as well? Okay, all right. So we've got three, and the Director of Public Health. All right, so Congressman Underwood. Or Congress, I guess it's been our tradition to allow former colleagues to begin, if Congressman Siniklis would like to begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to open with, you know, I understand where this bill is intending to go in terms of allowing for the circumstances to be revisited on a 30-day rolling basis in order to determine whether or not the actions taken, the scope of which and such, can be fully debated. And I think that's healthy. I think that that definitely is a component of how the system needs to be built out. I believe, if not six years ago, then four years ago, when I was in the legislature, I introduced legislation to try and mandate operational continuity plans throughout our government. That legislation was not successful at the time, and, you know, looking back with the benefit of hindsight, you know, it would have been really, really good if we had those things in place under these circumstances. That being said, this bill, I think, does fill a necessary void in terms of constantly reevaluating the lay of the land and whether or not actions that have been taken should continue and properly putting the debate into the public sphere for context as lawmakers deliberate and as the executive branch continues to execute. That being said, there is one component here that is missing that I think is critical, and that is that in the event that the legislature, for whatever reason, is unable to convene, there is no mandate or there is no established statute to authorize the legislature to convene in a manner that would allow them to address this, if in the event that it passes into law. And so, for example, I recall during this pandemic, there was a point in time prior to the rules being adjusted for these kind of hearings to take place, where the legislature was kind of frozen in place, and action wasn't able to be taken until those rules were adjusted. Rules, as we know, by my former colleagues and sitting senators, rules change on an ongoing basis, legislature to legislature. I think that we need to statutorily establish an operational continuity plan for the legislature. If the legislature is going to be the required gatekeeper for a rolling 30-day timeline on evaluating emergency declarations, because worst-case scenario, we pass this law, but we don't have that in place. And then for some reason, the legislature is unable to reconvene. This law will basically tie the hands of the governor from being able to do anything. And so if we're going to have this as a component of a proper checks and balances, we just need to make sure that the body that's going to be responsible for reinitiating another 30-day rolling window is actually statutorily going to be able to have the basis to be able to do that. And so I would recommend that as either an amendment or a companion legislation, an equal mandate be put into place that would require the legislature to somehow be able to continue operating and not just rely on it to be a rule, but actually a statute, so that regardless of what rules are adopted in the event that rules change or, you know, time passes and people kind of forget about why a particular rule was in place, the statute would be the safeguard in the event that this 30-day window would become an area of concern. That was the only suggestion I had on the legislation, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Congressman Siniklis. We were having issues at the time as well with the Organic Act limitations, so just to put that on the record. All right, Congressman Underwood. Congressman, unmute.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you again, Senator Titegwe, for reminding me. She was my student in high school. So I just, I want to congratulate Senator Castro for this bill. This bill actually endeavors to solve a problem which other bills have attended to, which is the extent to which an emergency declaration can continue on. And we've had, you I have to say that even though there was a lot of confusion in the beginning, and trying to deal with what is open meetings in this environment, what are procurement rules in this environment, how are decisions made in this environment, all of these issues have been continued to surface, and some have been successfully dealt with. I will leave it up to, I'm not running for the Guam Legislature, and so I'm not going to try to figure out what the Guam Legislature's role is exactly in this particular issue. But there are a couple of things that are attended to here, and that is the role of the executive branch in declaring an emergency and the role of the legislature in ensuring that an emergency doesn't go on indefinitely without some serious checks. And one of those is procurement. And when you raise the issue of procurement, there's always the kind of suspicion that maybe trying to secure goods and services on an immediate basis means that you suspend the normal processes which lead to more efficient purchases and more ethical purchases. And so there has to be that level. And so in order to be able to move this legislation forward, and I know that Senator Castro is talking, is also scheduled to meet with Senator Perez on this, there has to be evidence that there's something amiss in the process. You know, but basically, this is a call that you have to make as members of the Guam Legislature. And, you know, there's always a case of balance, and that balance goes back to the original declaration of emergency, and what are the details of that, and how do those change over time? So maybe there are gradations of emergencies. In the same way that there's PCOR 1 and PCOR 2 and PCOR 3, maybe there's some room for kind of maneuvering that kind of refinement of definition into the procurement process. But I don't, as I said, I'm not running for the legislature, but I trust in the wisdom of the sitting senators to be able to craft a positive solution for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Congressman Underwood. We will hear now from Mr. Deong Guerrero and then the Director of Public.
I'm testifying in support of this bill. My biggest question is, why wasn't this bill introduced in April session, May session, June session, July session, August session, or September session? The biggest problem we have right now is the lack of public confidence in the leadership of the government throughout this pandemic. Here in the public, we see how some people are forced to go into quarantine, but some people are allowed to bypass quarantine. We see how some businesses are publicly held out as good examples, a bad example, and other businesses are protected against disclosure. So for this bill to pass would be a good step towards restoring public confidence in future pandemic or emergency-type events, because the 30 days gives the governor all the room she needs to get a handle on what's going on. After that, there needs to be a much higher level of scrutiny on the actions and the expenditures and how those expenditures are playing out, something that we still aren't seeing to this day. And so that's why I'm supporting this bill. I think it could be made stronger by requiring a full financial report as part of the application process for extension. That way, we have a second level of scrutiny on the administration, their actions, their expenditures, which we all can agree have not been flawless or above board, and they are very damaging to the reputation of government of Guam as a whole in the eyes of the public. And it's incumbent on on the leaders and elected representatives and appointed representatives to rebuild the trust that our people used to have in the government. But we don't anymore. I mean, everybody I talked to is, well, not everybody, but a lot of people I talked to expressed their concerns that this is a hoax, that this whole emergency situation is just being kept alive so that the federal, that the local government can continue to milk the federal fun cow. And it's hard for us not, it's hard for us to debate that when you pass a budget that's totally totally boggles everybody's mind, because here we have an economy that's in utter destruction, circling the drain. You pass the second biggest budget in the history of the island, and there's a caveat that we're counting on federal funds to make up the shortfalls. That doesn't inspire competence among our people. So I support passage of this bill. I think 30 days is enough time for the governor, whichever governor it is, whatever pandemic it is, to build a compelling case to put before the legislature, so the legislature can act as the people's eyes and ears on this situation. And just one other example of why the people don't trust the government. The media are supposedly the eyes and ears of the people, but when the administration is muting reporters because they don't like questions, or limiting reporters to two questions. Here we are in a pandemic. They're issuing reports about deaths and infection rates and hospitalizations, but reporters are only limited to two questions. Do you realize how that comes across to the people? It's like the government's trying to hide something. And then, you know, going back to this procurement aspect, here, the federal government is offering government of Guam, a full-on mobile military hospital at their disposal. But what does government of Guam do? They want to buy a portable hospital. Now, we're talking about a government that has no credibility maintaining anything from swimming pools to the air conditioning units at the skilled nursing unit. And now you want to spend $1 million to buy a portable hospital that we don't even need yet, but in the event we do need one, the military has one on an island, and they can put it up before the one we bought ever gets here. So these are the issues that need to have that extra layer of public scrutiny that would come through a series of public hearings on the extension of an emergency order. And I think that how those public hearings are handled will be enlightening to the public, help build confidence for the public. But we're not seeing that right now, because here we hear the World Health Organization and the CDC are advising against lockdowns. What are we doing? We're still locked down. You know, so that little level of disconnect between the people and the government is only going to continue to grow. Suspicions are going to continue to build as we see more and more examples of politically well-connected insiders getting sweetheart contracts. I know people who brought in disinfecting supplies and PPEs, and their products were held in customs, while we have auto dealers and tailors who don't even have license to sell disinfectant cleaners and PPE, getting million-dollar contracts to provide these types of materials. types of materials to schools that are closed. So that's why we need to pass this bill because in 30 days is enough time for the government to establish a clear and compelling case on why this needs to go forward for the people because the way the people see it right now, this is a perpetual state of emergency designed to drain federal funds out of private, out of public accounts into private accounts. And that does not help public health at all.
Thank you, Mr. Leon Guerrero. Director Arson Augustine, Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. With regards to the measure before us, the way we're reading it is that if, this is an intent to do exactly as earlier discussed, one formalize the process, but while we're still utilizing our existing procurement provisions upon the renewal of any original declaration, we could support this. We have in both provisions, the amendment to 1940387 as well as 19406. The only thing really we are looking for is a reminder that as we move forward with procurement provisions, that this, there is no playbook, we've heard that. We are working with a novel virus, it's emerging, it's evolving, and there just still needs to be provisions for some quick action from the procurement perspective. As long as we maintain that, that'll help public health and other entities that are in the response mode, you know, something that is rather urgent, quick response. In terms of transparency, accounting, all that, I support such transparency, the people, legislative body, definitely important that we let you know what's going on with our spending. We can never really say that that's not a critical aspect of our local community. But today, in terms of me being here, we are, we're not using emergency procurement in the acquisition of our, for example, our services right now, we're using the standard traditional procurement process, processing them through general services. The only other aspect that we have is Homeland, but for example, the acquisition of our RNA extraction kit, although it's funded by federal dollars, and it is part of our effort to build our lab capacity testing that was done through a requisition issued by the department. We need flexibility, and there was a provision mentioned earlier about being sure that the legislative body would be able to meet. And perhaps that's the part that I, I'm not seeing at this point, but in terms of the extension renewals, transparency and accountability of what we're doing, I would support a measure that calls for us to do that just for the community. I think educating the community in terms of our activities, our finances, and our next steps, all that has been discussed really between this measure and the measure before us and the Bill of Rights, they're all related to our response. The only thing I would ask that we please not do anything that would limit our ability to respond timely, be it for the governor or be it for public health or for a service that needs to be put in place, there always needs to be that measure that would allow us, if it's acquisition of supplies and material, PPEs, protective personal equipment, and that we have a short time that we'd be allowed to do that, filling out reports as administrative, and if it's a public health requirement to do that as well, or however the legislation designs it, we will have to do our part and to provide that information to you. But the renewal of the executive orders and the use of the existing procurement process is something that we are using today. Again, I do want to note, we can note also that we are, through Homeland, has the ability to procure services during our, during our response effort. And so we can never, we'll never disagree about being transparent to the community. We need to share with you what we're spending, how we're spending our funds, although not part of this procurement discussion, sharing with you that we are working on providing information regarding our CERISOT funding, which is in line with the COVID-19 response, so that the community will have a better sense and improved sense of, or hopefully appreciation of how these funds have been awarded, the funds that have been awarded to Guam, how they have been used and how they will be used, either in this fiscal year and fiscal years to come. And that's really all we have to say about the measure is just, please maintain our flexibility to be able to respond to the health crisis, be it this pandemic, as Mr. Lindbergh, you said, or the next pandemic, we just don't know what the impact would be. And that's why they're called, you know, a pandemic, because it's a, it's a novel situation. In this case, it's a novel virus, and we just need to be able to be flexible and quick acting to contain and to protect the people. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Director. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the Deputy Director Duenas again and Deputy Director Ogun. Can I just ask you, Director, if this bill had been in place, would your recommendation, would, while you have been Director, have you made a recommendation to continue the health emergency declaration?
Yes, based on, not so much the procurement aspect, Madam Chair, but more the emergency declaration based on public health aspect, you know, this is primarily for procurement, right? But in terms of our numbers, our hospitalizations and things of that type of data and the community spread, that's the angle from, from, that's where we're coming from.
Did you ever make a finding that high probability of a large number of deaths in the affected population, a large number of incidence of serious permanent or long-term disability in the affected population, or a significant risk of substantial future harm to a large number of people in the affected population?
Well, more recently, Madam Chair, with regards to our rapid engagement team, which will be shared with most of you, or if not all, a few later this afternoon, that would fill the renewal purpose in one area that you're talking about, a high probability of a large affected population, and maybe more in terms of incidents, and perhaps this could be re-edited in terms of not just deaths but cases, and then high incidence cases, and not just deaths, because in some situations today, they may actually meet both requirements, but in, in future situations, it may not. And so, sorry, Madam Chair. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. With regards to the rapid engagement team, which we'll present later, you'll, you'll hear how we're looking at the northern based on data, and that would be our probability of incidents.
Okay. Art, could you just speak up in future? And I'm going to yield now to the sponsor of the bill, Senator Castro, for any questions to the panel.
No, I don't have any follow-up questions to the panel, Madam Chair, but I do have some closing comments, and if anybody else would like to contribute, that would be fine.
You will definitely be recognized for closing comments. Vice Chair Sabina Perez, Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, I just want to clarify some testimony that you provided, Director Son Augustine. So in your, in your experience, have you, is, does emergency procurement satisfy the needs of Department of Public Health and Social Services during this pandemic?
You know, when you first start off and you're responding to a, please let me know if you can hear me, because I'm not sure why my, perhaps it's my, it's my desktop unit, I maybe I need to change it out.
That's better.
Okay, okay. So with regards to the initial, what I understand initially, as I was not here back in March in terms of this position, that emergency procurement was critical to access services and goods. And so when you first are responding to initial, yes, the emergency procurement has value and place in terms of us being able to mobilize our resources and our services so that we can respond quickly to your question.
Okay, so basically, emergency procurement requires three quotes, and is that sufficient to, to respond to a public health emergency in your view?
Well, the, the procurement, once we send it out, it's really just fast track. We have a team that works on it, sometimes through our department and sometimes in partnership with Homeland. So what I know from the beginning is that it did work. Today, I can speak from the time I'm here, we seem to be able to acquire the services and goods that we need in our response effort at this point. We, I haven't had a major roadblock with the current procurement process in place, Madam.
Okay, so yeah, that's what this Bill 399 does. It basically closes the gaps in Emergency Health Powers Act to ensure that, that any kind of procurement that is done, it follows existing laws. And so I just want to be very clear that by doing, by, you know, you know, should this law be passed, should this bill be passed, that it's not, it, it basically satisfies the needs of, of the response to the public health emergency. I just want to get, get that clarification.
All right.
Okay, thank you. And so just a note, GSA did reach out to me regarding this bill, so they do have some, perhaps some, they would like to resolve the, the passage of Bill 90. They, they feel that there might be some refinements that need to be done to, to resolve any kind of just issues with that one. So, yeah, that's, that's all the questions for me right now. Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Perez. I welcome the input from the GSA, the Chief Procurement Officer. Senator Kelly Marsh Titto.
Situus Massey, Madam Chair. And, you know, it's been good to hear the different points of view regarding the bill, and it's good to hear that it has a lot of support and that it's balancing the needs of the community, the needs of the leadership to have certain flexibility, still be able to meet needs, but of course wanting to close gaps. And, you know, it just reminded me of some of the work from the fields that I'm, I'm from, and when they write reports, the first part of the report lays down the baseline from beginning to end, and I could see that for this bill of every time there's this renewal, I, I think it would be a good standard practice to reaffirm all of those varying directives in, you know, in, in an orderly fashion, but it reaffirms all of it, including whether there is this need for procurement, emergency differences and things like that. And I think it does a couple of good things. I think it's good housekeeping, and it keeps things orderly, findable. We have, you know, a, a large number of executive orders now, and when we go looking for things, it can take some hunting and finding down exactly which executive order it is, but if, with each of these executive orders, it was just a standard practice that everything is reexamined and reaffirmed, at least just the parts that still need to continue to move forward. It makes it much clearer for everybody. They have reevaluated what conditions are applicable. Everybody can see it and reevaluate it as well, and everybody knows for the next 30 days exactly what is applicable. So I do see that there, that this bill does good things, and, and I would seek to maybe expand it a little bit, like I said, and just have all of those varying directives that accomplish different things perhaps be reaffirmed so that, as I mentioned, there's reevaluation, there's clear understanding in the community, and, and just everybody has a chance to reevaluate and examine exactly what's going on. So I don't have any questions right now, but if I do, I'll let you know to see if I can ask them. Situus Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Telo Titto.
Situus Massey, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. And again, thank you to Public Health who's here today, who's sticking it out through us all the way through, appreciate that. You know, looking at this legislation, I think it's, it's great. It provides the accountability, I think, that we need to view, and, and I think, I, actually Senator Perez mentioned something about GCA, and that was basically my only question was to ask what GCA's input was on this. So looking forward to hearing their testimony, because I'd like to see this bill go through and, and be, you know, stronger in manner and, and in one way, and also provide what we all want, and that's transparency, most especially. So greatly appreciate the author of this legislation and looking forward to the GSA comments on this moving forward. Madam Chair, would OPA chime into something like this as well? Because they do, you know, hear any rebuttal or anybody protesting, so maybe OPA as well, if we can reach out to them as well for their comments. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. I would definitely invite them to comment on the bill or testify. Senator Torres? Okay, Senator James Moylan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see, well, as Senator Castro had mentioned, you know, we've had how many executive orders so far, about, I think it was seven, you know, it's like seven months into this thus far. And from our experience, we've seen with these executive orders, it's all about the communications of it. And again, like, like Senator Castro's 399 bill and Senator Luis's bill on 382, our difficulty is sprung from the executive order and the transparency and the communication of the executive orders. And as, as we go further, you know, hopefully these bills will, do move forward and eventually we'll be able to hear Senator Perez's bill, 386, again on, on procurement. But all, all these have, have come about because of our offices getting the calls and our question by the legislature, as mentioned, the checks and balances, because it's not clear, it's not transparent to us, and we need more answers, and if we can't get those answers here, this is what we must do. We had to amend, amend the law. But in the meantime, I want to thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing these bills up and, and moving forward with it. But in the meantime, I hope our future executive orders are clear, you know, and sure, we can amend, we can amend the law, the public law, Chapter 19 Title 10. But for today, I just hopefully add a loop, here's our, our concerns and here's, gets word of these bills and how far it's moved forward, and that we see some changes in the meantime to help, help our island move forward. So I thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the author of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Luis Munya.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and again, thank you to the author of this bill. Everything that we do is an opportunity for us to address concerns of the community and to bring people together to talk about it and discuss it and, and either support it or oppose it. And, and that's, you know, that's the democratic way, right? The process that we go through every day, what we do. I did have a question, whether it be for the author or for maybe anyone else on the panel, that if we, and maybe even the, the chair for procurement, maybe she would know that if, if we, if we don't extend the procurement authority after one month, what happens, like say for example, if a vaccine or a new therapeutic drug will become available, do we just go through the regular procurement process to buy large quantities of those drugs? What would, what would happen if, if that happens?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be happy to answer that. So there's two, two routes to, to take for emergency procurement. So there is the declaration of emergency by the governor, or there's a certificate of emergency by an agency head. So those two are the two avenues that anybody, any agency can undergo emergency procurement. So, yeah, should there be a vaccine, should, let's say the, the emergency is, is considered done, that doesn't exclude, exclude any agency from going through emergency procurement by certificate of emergency? And I hope that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, it does. So it's, basically then the governor could just automatically extend it then?
Yes.
If the vaccine comes up? Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, thank you. That, that was all my question, that, all the questions that I had and, and an opportunity for us to, to learn a little bit more and maybe talk and see what happens with the OPA and all the other stakeholders involved. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Munya. Before the sponsor concludes, I would like to ask just a couple more questions. One is, first of all, maybe Congressman Sinicless, you can answer this, it's a simple question. Are there any states that have not declared a, on a state basis, an emergency that there, I know that there is a federal, we are under federal state?
To my knowledge, no. I believe every state has, has done an emergency declaration.
And when you discuss the, that the vaccine might not be widely available until 2024, do, how do you see the emergency ending?
Well, the, it's not too.
The vaccine, I guess, is the question. The vaccine, I guess, is the question.
The the 2024 deadline was for a global availability. And so this for the entire world to to be able to have received the vaccine in terms of capacity and manufacturing, et cetera. It'll take 2024 for it to be global. As far as national, especially because these vaccines are are being developed nationally. And then the the President does have special powers to mobilize the private sector for for production for emergency purposes like these. We definitely can have quantities available for us to be able to receive them within within the next, you know, based definitely within, you know, three to six months, assuming that the current vaccine timelines are met. And so I'm I'm confident that, of course, the national development of the vaccine will result in the manufacturing capacity being directed specifically for national consumption. The 2024 deadline is for what is anticipated for the vaccine to have been available globally on a global basis.
All right. I just wanted to clarify. I know this is not the Director of Public Health, but is anyone else testifying that they think we should not be in a state of emergency at this time?
I'm sorry, is the question directed towards me?
Not necessarily, no. Just want to make sure that we, today, we have not received any testimony that we should not be in the state of emergency at this time. Is that correct? Mr. Young, where am I? Am I interpreting your testimony correctly?
I'm, in in my testimony, I am saying that we need more scrutiny from the administration's declarations because right now we have heard the CDC and the World Health Health Organizations both say that lockdowns are counterproductive and in fact are probable vectors for causing infection spreads. And we see that here in Guam where we have a large percentage of multi-generational households. We have a very high prevalence of chronic diseases, diabetes, cancers, which weakens the body and makes it more susceptible to the COVID infections. When you look at the, we're up to 67. We recorded our 67th death while we were on this conference. And when you look at those 67 deaths, 62 of them are underlying health issues aggravated by COVID, which shows that Art has one hell of a job ahead of him, getting his hands wrapped around the chronic infection problem facing Guam. Because when we look, I mean, if I were to ask for a show of hands, how many people on this panel have a member of their family suffering from diabetes, cancer, or high blood pressure? Just about every hand would go up. We saw that when we did our first survey of chronic diseases back in 2015, at a time when the US rate was 9%, the public health was reporting 12%. I asked them, where did you get those, that 12% number? Said, oh, we got it from Department of Health. And and I said, well, how did they get it? Oh, they just do a factor. So we did an actual survey of almost 900 residents, 900 residents. And we found that we had an over 30% of those 900 residents had had diabetes. And it was the same thing for all the other chronic disease rates. So the biggest problem we're facing here and why I think that we need to readdress this issue, the PCOR 1 has destroyed our local economy. You talked about it with the post office. Now, the post office has changed their rules. Lines are moving much faster.
I just wanted to know about the this current, whether we currently meet this criteria for an emergency. I appreciate that the bill would would pattern, it's the same criteria that is currently available to the legislature to terminate a an emergency, a declaration of a health emergency is what this bill proposes, must be found to continue a health emergency. So same and but yes, so I agree with you that the complications that these these diseases pose have been very evident here in our community and and maybe maybe give more rise to the findings that that the bill proposes. But but I agree with all of you. I think that, yes, the bill, you know, requires a just more scrutiny, more, well, findings. I think findings are always very good. They're going to help the community to come along with us to understand why we are doing something. And if if the finding has to be reviewed, then then it just allows for more input. As you know, we had to override a bill earlier this term that required reporting on on some of those expenditures during this emergency. And that I I think, you know, just like right now, we are fighting, we are facing a an issue where the public health has declared an emergency. They recommend we are still under an emergency, that there are still compelling factors that put our community at risk, that but, you know, we are already in September, many months into this, and we are still under discussions with the Attorney General as to whether we can enforce these executive orders. And I find that very frustrating. I think it's, you know, that it should be the lead. You know, you've got to lead us with the least restrictive means available to us as a government to control the emergency, right? And so, but yes, I guess, so if, are you able to tell us the status, Mr. Director, of of, you know, businesses that violate executive orders?
Madam Chair and members, with regards to that question, you actually are on point. Although maybe you didn't say, but I think is a sentiment is that I do agree that this question should have been raised sooner than it is today, but it has been raised and whether the applicability of the public nuisance can result based on compliance or noncompliance, rather, with EO, Executive Order and the Public Health Guidance. That question still remains with the Office of the AG in terms of its proper application. And I know that I did send a follow-up inquiry yesterday and I will do one later on, if not today, later on tonight. And so I don't have any official feedback unless it came through the email while I've been here. And so to be fair to the AG's office, I don't know. They sent something since I've been to the public hearing this this morning and through the afternoon. And so it's still in the review from what I understand at this point, Madam Chair.
All right. Well, we talk a lot about the plan to move forward. And and I think there's consensus that the plan is going to be, how do you operate safely? And I think, you know, the businesses are all expecting to be required to operate safely and that that might be a new reality for all of us. For example, distances or occupancy amounts and things like this. And I'm I'm curious if if we remove a state of emergency, if we can control all of those things that public health is right now trying to control. And I would like to think that we can by some tweaking of our rules and regs or our permitting requirements. But we would like that to be very much based on science and data as to why we are making this particular restriction. And that's, I think, the biggest challenge before us right now is to get that consistent with across across the board, across the nation, you know, across, but for sure here in Guam, there's no reason we can't operate very, very clearly and consistently. And, you know, Congressman, I hate to put you on the spot, but while you're here, I hate to waste the opportunity. And I'm concerned that we are, we are, and I'm just talking on the top of my head, so this is not scripted. But, you know, we've, we've had a challenge to get data from the, from, you know, the military side of the the occurrence of, you know, the COVID or the spread. And now we've got the military proposing to open schools. We here on Guam, you know, are, there've been a determination that schools will not be able to open. We have too many challenges in front of us to open these schools safely or that's that seems to be the determination. And but, you know, I just, you know, we know that the people who, for example, the construction industry has been ongoing, especially those industries where they are, you know, working on military projects. The people are still going on and off the base. People go on and off the base for school as well, the teachers, all of it. And and so I guess I'm just, I don't know, how do you see this division in? It's, it's like we're going to have two operating systems, yet for me, I I don't see how the science tells us that the that the COVID, the spread of the virus is that is divided like that or it can be managed, you know, in systems where the community, it's not like everybody stays behind the base. They're they are interacting with our community and we're actually seeing that in the videos of the businesses of that, you know, are open and and accepting customers. And so just, so we're all interacting and I I don't know. Sorry, I'm just, I guess I'm not, I haven't really figured out what the resolution to that is. But do you have any thoughts on that, Congressman Nicholas?
Sure, I can provide some perspective. First of all, with respect to the number of of cases that are occurring on the military bases, we do need to be mindful of the national security concern where we don't want to be publicizing whether or not there is a weakness in our defense capabilities as a result of of this pandemic. And so that is, that is always going to be a factor that we need to be mindful of. And I understand that that's one of the reasons why, for example, they don't publicize, you know, how many ships are out there at sea and what the infection rates are in those particular circumstances. So that's something that we we need to factor. Another area that I I fully understand where you're coming from in terms of how they're opening their schools and what they're moving forward with on the on the DODA school side. The the Indo-PACOM, the Indo-Pacific Command, has a a threat assessment level that they apply throughout the entire region. And in my communications with the Admiral, he has made every effort to as much as possible align those align those conditions. The ability for the military to be able to reopen their schools, I think, is more of a a circumstance that has to do with their capacity to be able to satisfactorily do so without putting the the community and their and their mission at risk. I think that one of the things that we can look at in a proper lens would be they wouldn't be reopening their schools if they felt like they were going to be putting their mission at risk either. And the fact that they are is a testament to the fact that they've obviously adopted protocols that meet the the standards, not only for the operations to resume the way they're going to here locally, but to do so in a way that wouldn't threaten the entire mission regionally. Something to be mindful of is that if they were doing something that could potentially exacerbate risks, those risks wouldn't just be contained to Guam and the bases because they have troop interactions with current current forces here on Guam throughout the entire Indo-Pacific region. And so I'm confident that if they're making the decision to reopen, they're, at least on the school side, they're doing so having met a satisfactory standard to be able to do so without creating or exacerbating any existing risks, not only to the community but to their mission. That being said, it may be an opportunity for our our local government and our local Department of Education to consult with the DODA schools here on Guam and find out, you know, how did you guys get to a level where you're able to reopen and have kids return to school and feel safe about it, not only for the community's sake, but also for the mission, for the sake of not further endangering the mission? And and perhaps that whatever guidance we can glean from that could help us have a better sense of direction with how we're going to be addressing our school circumstances and whether or not reopening under the same kind of protocols might be something worthwhile. Just for a final context, what we're doing here on Guam is not what's happening across the country. There are different jurisdictions taking different actions. Some are reopening, some are having schools reconvening. Others are doing entirely distance learning. I know that we're doing, I think, three different options here locally with respect to education. And so, you know, Guam at the end is is going to be able to implement whatever we feel is best. But what we're doing is not exactly what's happening everywhere else either. And so we can, we can definitely, I think, find some some avenues for solutions if we if we look towards those examples and to include the DODA example of how we can try to get our schools back open, what they've done to do so in a way that's meeting mission expectations, not putting anything into additional risk category, and what investments they've made to be able to do that. And perhaps we can, we can make similar investments here with the same level of confidence.
I I understand the investments into schools. I guess I'm just concerned about this, yeah, vision that one part of our community can can operate safely while the rest are just, you know, going to fend for themselves and, you know, struggle. But Director Son Augustine, is, are you able to determine when when? I know that when we had our, we had a hearing recently, we were not receiving data necessarily from the military, except for the number of positive cases that 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 was it. And the tracing that you said was being done by them. And then we had that, you know, outbreak at the construction company. And I don't know, I just want to know, are you, do you feel like there is a, we have this ability to to make a seam in our community and that one part can operate safely and we are going to?
If I may, Madam Chair, with regards to the data, it has remained the same. We have a team that consults with the military in terms of positive cases. And 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 the Congressman, you actually touched on a very key part, the capacity. The military has resources unlike the local government and their affiliates, the whole Department of Defense, has very structured processes. And their structured processes actually keeps, keeps really is very, is is something that anyone who's affiliated with the military is very mindful of. So so they understand these processes. This is a military comparison to a civilian community and they're very, very distinct differences, Madam Chair. In speaking, working with JRM, they they shared with us how they were very expedient in taking action for military individuals that were not compliant to the point that they were actually released of their jobs. So they have a a system that has been played well and thought well out and played through and through. So they've tested their systems. They've got their lawyers. They've got their whole gamut of support system. They, we had asked them about their resources and I'll give everyone a really quick example. If you are quarantined on base, you don't leave your home. They will bring the food to your doorstep. They will let you know it's there and then you pick it up. And and this is their support system that was in place when they initially started quarantining. So like if we put our local community on quarantine, we do not have the resources to replicate that approach. They have the manpower to do that. And those are very, very distinct differences in terms of how they operate and the resources that they have, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Director. I I saw you raising your hand, Congressman Underwood. Did you want to add something to that?
Yeah, so, you know, I just want to add that it is a responsibility of the federal representative to bridge that gap, not to just acknowledge it. And I think that a more proactive congressional office would have been in on this issue from the time of the Teddy Roosevelt incident and from the time when there was great dramatic attention to that. And and the DODA schools, you know, I don't know what the percentage is of the DODA schools that are actually local students that are eligible to go to DODA schools, but it's a pretty high number. So it's not exactly as, as you have outlined it, Madam Chair. You know, the the defense is sort of an artificial barrier when it comes to public health issues. Because, you know, when you think about it, the way that public health issues. Because, you know, when you think about it, the way that at one time people were behaving at Taragi Beach while the public facilities and outside the fence were shut down, there's all these disjunctures. So there's more room for more communication indeed that, that the DOD is free to do what they want, but there should be more communication. And that communication should be facilitated by the, the federal representative because it is the federal representative that can hold them to account, can, can make requests for information and, and, and make more explicit and open and transparent the activities that are going on inside the military facility.
Thank you for that. Yeah, it's just, you know, I, I wish, you know, everybody can open. I want to bring everybody along in our community. I know we have certain, you know, churches that claim they can operate safely, yet, you know, we want all of them to operate safely. And that's just, I guess that's all I'm going for is I want, I want us all to be able to bring each other along. And I'm going to now allow the sponsor to close, or sorry, Senator Titanow, did you have a question to add? And then the sponsor will close.
May I have an opportunity to respond, please?
Oh, can I have Senator Titanow please state her question first and then?
Yeah, it's, it's just a comment, you know, my concern is the ways that we're intertwined with DODA. From, I, I don't have hard statistics, but the statistics that I've heard is that maybe as much as the student population is local families, about 30%, and maybe as much of the faculty is 80% from the local community. And so, you know, the resources do give them more abilities to respond in certain ways, but it, you know, one of my concerns is it, it just creates a lot of flow back and forth. They cannot necessarily contain what 80% of their faculty are doing on the outside where we've got one of the highest rates of, of cases. And so, yeah, it causes a lot of concern for me that somehow this 17% of positive case rate on our side, while 80% of their faculty are going in and 30% of their students are going in and it's flowing back and forth. Yeah, I'd like to understand more of that because I don't think it's, they don't want the risk for them, but we don't want the risk being exacerbated out here either. So, yeah, I would like to understand that more so because that part of it, I don't understand how that's able to be quite contained. But, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up. There's, there's a lot of that intertwined, this, to coin a, a term, between our communities, you know, the inside the fence and the outside the fence.
Thank you, Senator. All right. Congressman, I'll allow you a very brief remark because I, I've reserved the time left. We have just a few minutes remaining for Senator Castro. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I wanted to express my appreciation to Director San Augustine. The, the DODA school system, there's a reason why they have a, a different outlook. And that is because they have a different way of setting standards and enforcing those standards. There's a reason why, Madam Chair, despite DODA schools paying upwards of 30 to 40% more for their staff, that, you know, the, there's still people who don't necessarily avail of those positions. And that is because the standard, the expectation, the consequence for not complying with the implementation procedures that they're able to adopt on a programmatic basis, the, the consequences are just very different. I think that there's definitely opportunities for us to perhaps see what they're doing that might be beneficial. And absolutely, if we can communicate with them and, and get some examples from there, then, then let's, let's consider it. And just to clarify for the record, Madam Speaker, I have on numerous occasions made suggestions to this local government on certain activities that are being done to include paying essential workers, making sure that we're providing resources to people who need rental assistance. We've absolutely been reaching out and facilitating those communications, whether or not they're being advocated for and, you know, promoted by, by anybody on this panel is another story entirely. But, you know, in order for us to be able to make sure that we're going to have a level of comfort in what the DODA schools are doing, I think we need to understand that they're also able to hold their personnel and their, and their students to a certain level of accountability that we are not able to necessarily adopt here. And so I'm, I'm, I'm happy that they've found a, a happy medium on their side to be able to reopen their schools. I'm hoping that we're going to be able to begin deploying our resources to, to, to start moving in a direction that allows us to do that safely. But I'm also not going to try and advocate for something that I think our local school system is going to have a, a very different set of circumstances in implementing because they are entirely, they're operating in an entirely different framework from what the DODA schools are operating under. And so
That's, that's, thank you, Congressman. Yes, that's exactly my point. It's not that, you know, they have different standards. Of course, everyone has different standards, but it's that we are dealing with different people. We are dealing with different situations. We, we are able to control much less of the circumstances that are before us. And so there, it's complex and it's very complex. And, and that's all. I, I appreciate, again, I appreciate all of you who are here. And Senator Castro, this is your bill. I'm going to allow you to propose and thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank you, Chairperson Toulahi, for the privilege to have the bill addressed.
Congressman, there, here we go.
But also to you, Chair Sabina Perez, for reaching out and agreeing to help me improve the bill as it's written. And above all, I'd like to close with just highlighting a few comments that were made on Bill 90 and this bill today. You said it yourself, Chair, that it's necessary for the government to set up the, the necessary mechanisms to prevent a trade-off under emergency conditions between those items that are of lesser value or higher prices. We also heard from Senator Perez herself that the idea behind both her bill and this one, and I'm hoping for Bill 386 as well, is that we want agencies to move away from emergency procurement in order that we may get the best value from whatever it is we hope to buy or procure as a community. This bill specifically intends to address emergency procurement with it, without it having to be indefinite. That, that's really the, the crux of the whole, the bill itself. And to Senator Marsh, thank you again. I think you highlighted in Bill 90 that we all want to avoid the prolonged abuse or at least mitigate any potential opportunity for potential abuse under emergency circumstances. So thank you for that. Again, back to the bill in closing, it makes the governor's authority to renew very explicit. Right now, as, as the statute reads, it's only implied under the current law. It also creates conditions in which the governor may renew consistent with the conditions necessary for original declaration and consistent with the inverse conditions necessary for the legislature to terminate state of emergency. To Senator Munya, thank you for reaffirming that it restores the procurement process and regulations. She did that by asking the question that the Oversight Chair responded to succinctly, that it restores procurement processes and regulations after the original 30-day stay, or in this case, the 90 days of a certificate of need has been established if Bill 90 should pass. One of my colleagues mentioned that the public sentiment about executive actions during this pandemic is, has been for the most part generally negative. And, and I, I think we heard it excessively today and in a previous hearing, that's due to the lack of clarity and the lack of regularity, if you will, the frequency in communicating these concerns. And so Leader Taitegwe and Senator Moylan, thank you. I agree with you 100% that the issues of accountability during this time of extended executive authority is something that should be at the fore, at the front of our minds. And Madam, Madam Chair, if I could, to, to the two Democrat congressional candidates, thank you for participating. I'm really humbled by that and I appreciate your contribution, a very constructive contribution to improving the bill. Congressman Siniklis, to your credit, I, I do want to highlight that, yes, you're right. I, I will revisit provisions of Bill 2334 relative to operational continuity plans. In the previous body, I was a co-sponsor of that piece and so was, so was the Chair, Therese Toulahi, Senator Munya, Rajeev Biskoly, Senator San Augustine. And we voted, we voted, quite a number of us voted to pass that. Unfortunately, it was vetoed. To former Congressman Underwood, I took notes. I agree with you as well that balance needs to be had and refinement based on perhaps Director San Augustine's input, based perhaps on the phenomena that's before us as a community, or perhaps even against a particular condition of readiness that's defined and before us. Ken, Mr. Ken Liangro, thank you for your input. I, I couldn't agree. I'm going to close with your point. And your point was this, and forgive me if I misstated, you can always clarify, I'm sure, in the media. But I agree with you on your statement about the need to work towards protecting government resources and being mindful of the need to build up public confidence. So I think everyone agrees that a united community around responsible policy to move us forward as a community in the weeks and months ahead is important to Guam families as, as it is to industries and as it is, as it is to this entire government. So with that said, Madam Chair, thank you. I'm extremely humbled by the participation of this awesome panel and by your willingness to allow my bill to be heard in a month's time. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Castro. And I as well am humbled by the presence of our Congressman, our, our former Congressman, our Archbishop earlier today, our public health, who's been working very, very hard. And thank you for your constructive input on these bills. And we all want to see an emergency end, you know, we want to see us all operate as, as effectively and let people get back to their lives as soon as possible. So towards that end, yes, we are trying to flush these things out. How far can we go with these bills to, to, to get to that end? But again, to my colleagues, Sisus Massey for being here today and for your input. And again, thank you all very, very much. We are going to recess now until 4:30 where we will convene a round table to discuss pre-hospital isolation and care for COVID-19 positive individuals. The committee stands in recess. Thank you.